All right, Eric, when you're ready.
All right, good evening. My name is Eric Bernstein. I'm an attorney at law in the state of New Jersey and serve as the Township Planning Board Attorney for this evening's reorganization meeting of the Hillsborough Township Planning Board for calendar year 2021. I'd like to call to order this meeting. This meeting is being conducted virtually. All board members, staff, and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone numbers identified in the public meeting notice. Meeting documents have been made available at HTTPS colon double backslash Hillsborough NJ dot civic clerk dot com backslash in accordance with the public meeting notice. If everybody would rise, I would ask the mayor to lead us to the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
The republic which stands.
For our God.
For the liberty of justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Lepani.
My pleasure.
All right. The next item is the announcement of meeting notice. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the Public Law of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice this meeting has been provided to the Hillsborough Beacon and to the Courier-News, to the Township Clerk, posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted on the township's website. Because this is a Zoom, it is electronically transmitted meeting, additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to public law 2020, Chapter 11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically in pursuant to local finance notices recently established by the state of New Jersey. At this time, I will administer the oath of office to the newly appointed members. You do not have to rise. You can sit in your seats. Just make sure you raise your right hand. That would be Mr. Lepani, Mr. Wagner if he is here, Mr. Delkor, Mr. Julian, Mr. Chickarelli, Mr. Santa Maria, Mr. Hashtag are not here this evening, so I will now admit it to the oath. Understand that you are signing your lives away, gentlemen, for no pay. So with that, I state your name.
I show.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Where? That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government's established.
And to the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform. And justly.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of class. Fill in your class number.
Of the office of class.
One.
All the.
Member of the planning board's seat number, for those of you who have assigned seats.
Seat.
I don't know. I don't know the planning board.
Seats. Seat six.
One.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
God.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God. Congratulations, gentlemen. Your better halves now know where you are two Thursdays a month. Um, please sign your lives away. We will swear. We will swear and subscribe them at a point in the future. Congratulations to all. With that, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. Just gonna do a roll call.
Thank you.
Absent is Mr. Santa Maria, Mr. Hashtag, Mr. Scobbo, and I don't think Mr. Wagner's come on. So, Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Here.
Pezen?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Sarachi?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
That gives us a quorum at seven. All right, now that I have a few minutes, I have, no, I'm only kidding. The next item of business will be to open nominations for chairman of the Hillsborough Township Planning Board for calendar year 2021. Do I hear a nomination?
Uh, I will nominate Carl Sarachi.
Does anyone want to consider them? Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Delkor, seconded by Mayor Lepani. Do we have any other nomination for chair? Hearing none. You're still interested, Carl, correct?
I'm still here.
Is there a motion to close?
Politician hasn't ever heard one. Motion to close.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of motion to close nominations?
I.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? With that, Mr. Ambardozzi, would you please call the roll for the nomination of Carl Sarachi for chairman?
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
And Chair Sarachi?
Sure, yes.
Carl, with that, the meeting is now yours.
I appreciate it, everybody. Thank you. So, yes, next up is, our next position is nominations for vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Chairman, Vice Chair Neil Julian.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a nomination. Second. Any additional? None, good. So we will close nominations and take a vote, roll call, for Neil Julian as vice chair for 2021.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Excellent. Welcome back, Neil.
Thank you. Good to see you.
He was a good bullpen guy for you, Carl. Did a great job.
It is. Next up, nominations for secretary.
I will nominate Ken Hashtag.
I'll second that.
So, nomination is second. Any additional? None, good. Close nominations and take a vote, roll call, for Ken Hashtag as board secretary.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, and congratulations to Ken wherever he is.
Teach you not to show up.
Okay, next, we have a resolution ratifying the fair and open selection process. I have a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Excuse me. Uh, next is resolution appointing our board attorney. And because of our reputation, we only had one proposal. Mr. Bernstein?
Full.
Hopefully, I was not done on sympathy.
Yes, I scared everyone away.
There we go. So, do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Okay. Any comments from the virtual dais? From the floor, seeing hearing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Very much, yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, it's resolution appointing board engineer through the fair and open proposal. And do I need to list all the?
No, there are five. There are five nominees. We need a motion for one of them.
Okay. We have motion for board engineer.
I'll make a motion for Peroni.
Panoni?
Panoni, sorry.
All right, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations?
Okay, seeing none. Any comments from the dais? Floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
I'm, yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, next, resolution appointing ultimate board engineer. We did receive three proposals through the fair and open process, Brightview Engineering, CME Associates, Bourbon Engineering. Do I have a nomination?
Pardon me for a minute. I believe, if I was recall. I lost my page, sorry.
You can select one or more than one or all three.
I believe last year we had two.
Yep, I think that's what happened.
Uh, also, it was, uh, raised for Brightview, I believe, is my nomination, and CME, I recall.
David, who got it last time, do you know?
Um, no, I don't recall offhand.
Okay. So, we have a nomination for Brightview and CME Associates. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
Any comments from the dais then? Floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, resolution appointing board court reporter. Again, only one proposal received. Scared everybody away uh, from Michael Lamodarzy. Boy, I'm tongue tied, sorry. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Floor, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Welcome back. Next is appointment of the master plan subcommittee. I believe that's for me.
Those are your appointments, Mr. Chairman. Four voting members, one alternate, and you select the chairman as well.
I remember Neil was chairman, so Neil, would you like to come back?
Sure. Who laughed?
I'll admit I did. It was more the response. So, Mr. Julian is one of the four you're nominating.
Right.
As well as being chairman. You're three of the nominations and an alternate.
Yes, I'll nominate myself onto that. Um, I believe, Mayor Lepani, I believe you were the alternate last year?
I can be, or if someone else would like to be on it, that's, that's, I'll leave that up to them, but I will take it.
Okay.
I was on it.
All right, Rob, so would you like to come back?
Yes.
When I'm mute.
And you need one alternate.
Okay, so.
Anybody who's not here.
Anyone?
That was my thinking. Whoever's not here gets the lucky, uh.
Or I'll give it up.
Already an alternate, so does that count?
Can an alternate be an alternate on the?
Yeah, yes, an alternate can be an alternate.
There you go.
Don you interested?
Uh, my ignorance is bliss, so I'll say yes.
So, the master plan subcommittee will be Neil Julian, Carl Sarachi, Sean Lepani, Robert Pezen, John Chickarelli. Mr. Julian will be the chair. This is a chairman's appointment, does not require board approval. So, for those of you who thought you were going to get a chance to vote no on it, no.
He can't run high.
All right, next item, Mr. Chairman.
Is resolution adopting the rules of order?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. Any comments from the dais? Floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Pawnee?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Carl, Carl, this is Fred Kinsler. Before you continue, I want to, there's somebody on the public that I'm not sure they're, it's not a name, so I just want to promote them in case uh, if it's maybe Mr. Wagner or something. So, the person I just promoted, can you state your name? Are you, are you somebody from the public or somebody needs to be here who you're raising your hand?
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, this is Ron Scobbo.
Okay, that's what I thought. Sorry, sorry for interrupting, guys. Mr. Scobbo's on it.
Yeah.
Seven twenty.
I'm still having problems, but I could see everybody and I could hear everything.
All right, we can hear you, Ron, so thank you. Sorry, Carl.
No, no, it's okay. And, and Ron, you're some type of sequence of numbers.
All right, Mr. Scobbo is here. Thank you, sir. Seven twenty. Let's go on with the, with the ordered business, Mr. Chairman.
I changed his name so you could see him now, Carl.
Uh, next time I have a motion to adopt the resolution designating the officially, uh, the official newspaper.
What's the official newspaper?
The Beacon and the Courier-News.
Actually, I should have said newspapers.
This is, this is created, this is pursuant to law, folks. This is not, you know.
So moved.
I'll make him second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, fixing the charge for notice of me?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, we have a motion to adopt the resolution setting the schedule of meetings for 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Emick? Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution of the open meeting policy?
All moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution of administrative procedures?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, so we come to the end of our agenda.
Mr. Chair? Bob, you're, if I can have one minute before we adjourn?
Sure.
I, I would just like to thank you and the board for allowing me to be your engineer for the past two years. It, it's been an honor and a pleasure working with the members as well as your planning department. You are a very dedicated, uh, group of residents who take every application to heart, um, very thoughtful and insightful questions. And I can see you guys have a great love for your municipality, and it's been an honor working with you. And I, you know what? I look forward to hopefully working with you guys again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yurov.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your work.
Uh, the record also reflect that Bob will still be staying on, on the campus associates and some other outstanding matters. Uh, and, Mr. Chairman, if I would like to thank the board for what is now my 21st consecutive appointment. Uh, and I do look forward to another exciting year here with the board. And I would concur with Bob, this is probably my most professional uh, and probably best prepared board, so it's always a pleasure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Eric.
Twenty-one years in planning, you're that like a hundred and people years?
No, it's a hundred and forty-four. I had no gray hair when I started this.
Sure.
Hey, just take a look at my first photo on the wall. I love it.
Yeah.
I have a question. Are we, are we adjourning and then jumping into the next meeting?
Uh, we're, we're adjourning and coming back in four minutes.
Okay, same, same length or different?
Same length.
Yeah.
Same length.
So frankly, what you all are doing, unless Fred causes me wrong, you put yourselves, is turn off your cameras.
And mute.
Put yourselves on mute and come back in four minutes. We need a motion to adjourn first.
Before, may I jump in here for one second before everybody leaves? Um, we did sort of skip one very important item. Uh, the board needs to, and I don't see the resolution in the packet, but we need to extend TNM's contract. So, to finish out all the applications that they've started.
It wasn't in the packet? Okay.
I don't see it.
Was it, was it to May, March 31st, Dave?
Yes, I believe so.
Uh, motion to extend TNM to March 31st for existing, uh, kind of proposal, application.
Take their motion.
Okay. Frank, you second it? Second.
Pawnee and Pawnee and Delkor.
Okay, perfect. Okay, comments?
At their current rates.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Roll call, Michael.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry, I did find this big pile of paper. It was in your pack. It's, it's a resolution to extend the professional services agreement with TNM Associates. Um, yes, so it was in there. I'm sorry, we just missed it. Wasn't on the, on the list, though.
Okay.
No worries. So, any additional comments from the dais? From the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor? Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, and again, just so everyone know, our next meeting is in about two minutes, our regular meeting, first one of the year, so.
You need a motion to adjourn.
Like to have a motion to adjourn our, our meeting.
So moved.
The motion second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Seeing about two minutes.
Hello, Ms. Cafone, are you there?
I am here. Hello, how are you?
Hi, how are you? I, I, I'm gonna start checking some people that were, came in, uh, so thank you for that.
Yes.
Mr. Bar, are you there? Mr. Sekler, could you guys unmute just so we could check? Matt Sekler's here. How are you? Thank you.
Yeah, Vic Bar's here.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. Let's see. Mr. Offen, Offenord, I'm not sure if I'm saying it right.
Yes, that's correct. I'm here.
Oh, great, I got it right, thank you. Sorry, I didn't, hope I didn't botch it to a.
You, you got it right on the money.
Ah, that's, that's a rarity. Mr. Weiss, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I know you came home while the meeting was going. I didn't want to interrupt them. I think that's it. I think we got everybody. Is that Mr. Yenamski? Y N Navanski, is that you? Could you unmute yourself?
Yeah, that's me, thank you.
Okay, great, just checking, sorry about that. Thank you.
Appreciate it, no problem, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Sekler, is Mr. Klein coming on with you today? Or is it just gonna be yourself?
It's just gonna be myself.
Okay, great, thank you.
Related to traffic engineering, I don't know.
Ah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I know he's on the, he's on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure because I haven't seen him. So, I don't have to look for him anymore, I appreciate it.
Whenever we get Carl back.
I'm here.
All right, sorry, didn't see you. Whenever, whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the members of the board reappear?
Mr. Bernstein, you want him to take a roll call so we start? I will do that in the middle, yeah, we'll do that later.
I want him to take a roll, I want him, we'll go through the standard meeting and then.
The normal start. Got it.
Okay.
I think we have everybody back, so I'm gonna get started.
Ron's on mute, though I see him in his darkened figure. There he is, all right.
Looks like he's about to do a Queen video.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, so I just welcome everybody to the January 14th, 2021 regular public meeting of Township Hillsborough Planning Board. I know it says start at 7:30 PM, we're running about five minutes late. It is being conducted virtually. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identified in the public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you are participating by telephone to indicate you would like to be recognized to speak. Meeting and application documents have been made available on the township website, hillsboroughnj.civicclerk.com in accordance with the public meeting notice. Applicants will be presenting remotely and will identify themselves before testifying. So, with that, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, just for all.
Thanks for the flag, Ron.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 31 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, to the township clerk, posted on the bulletin board of the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to public law, public law 2020, comma, C.11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to the local finance notices recently established. And with that, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Santa Romita, Mr. Hashtag, and Mr. Wagner are absent. Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Pezen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor. Present!
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Maski?
Here.
Mr. Euro?
Here.
Mr. Kinsler?
Here.
And Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Thank you. Excuse me. Okay, we do not have any meeting minutes for consideration nor resolutions. There is no playing board business other than applications. So, coming down to business from the floor for matters not on the agenda, so that there's anyone, any public members that would like to direct any comments to the board for matters not on the agenda and that would mean the applications that are listed. So, if there's anybody, please either use the raise your hand icon if you're participating through Zoom or press star nine if you're participating by telephone. See anyone?
I don't see anyone either, Chairman.
Okay, moving on, we do not have consideration of ordinances. So, now we will be moving to applications. The first one listed. Mr. Chairman, let me, sorry. Back you up one little bit on the planning board business, the draft annual report was submitted to the board. They would ask that the board accept and adopt the annual report for 2020. Sorry about that, my copy of the agenda didn't have that, but I know I saw that somewhere.
No moves.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any comments from the dais? From the floor? Scene on roll call, please.
Jeremek?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Now, moving on to applications. The first one listed, CP East Brunswick.
It's not on for this evening, your, Mr. Chairman, it's on for the 28th.
Right, I was just gonna note it, the application's been adjourned 28th of this year with pre-notice. The next step, we have Campus Associates LLC, file number 20-PV-13-MSP. And this application or the hearing is continued from the December 3rd, 2020 meeting without further notice.
Mr. Chairman, from a, for a housekeeping point of view, before Mr. Paula Castro resumes his presentation, is my understanding that you have reviewed the material, the video for the December 3rd meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And you will be providing a certification to the board offices to confirm same?
Yes.
Which makes you eligible to participate this evening and potentially vote either tonight or at a future meeting. With that, Mr. Chairman, we were still in Mr. Paula Castro's presentation when we were last together. I'll ask him to introduce himself for the record.
Good evening, again, for the record, Mark Pulley Castro, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, counsel. First of all, how was my audio, was it okay?
A little, we need to talk up just a little more.
About now, a little better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, we're gonna try to streamline our testimony and be as efficient as possible, and so we'd like to call our first witness, Mr. Bar, who is the architect for the project. Mr. Bar, please state your name for the record.
Victor Albar Jr.
Hi, Victor, let me just swear you in, okay?
Yep.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Bar, your role in this project was what?
I was your architect.
Okay, and your credentials, please, for the board and the members of the public?
I'm president and CEO at VLBJR Architects and Planners. I have a bachelor of architecture degree from Penn State University and a certificate of planning from the University of Florence in Italy. Over my career, 40 years, I've been registered in approximately 15 states, including New Jersey, and been involved in a planning and design of roughly a half a million residential units. My firm specializes in private sector, high-density residential and mixed-use development with projects from Boston, Richmond. In this part of New Jersey, we currently have projects in Linden, East Hampton, Bedford, Marlton, Pennsauk and Mount Laurel, Lumberton, Walrich, Glassboro, Delran, Florence, Berlin.
Excellent. I was more focused on your time in Florence, Italy, but thank you very much. So, you have a presentation that you'd like to make, a brief presentation?
Board have any problem, I assume you're calling Mr. Bar, Mr. Paul Castro is an expert.
I am, Mr. Bernstein.
Does the board have any problems in accepting Mr. Bar as an expert?
We accept.
Please continue.
Now, you have some exhibits, Mr. Chair, we have exhibits on Mr. Bar's screen, he could share them from there, or we can ask that they be called up, whatever the board's pleasure.
I can, I can, I can make him a co-host so he can share his screen, if he's familiar with that.
Excellent.
Michael, do you, Michael or Mark, do you recall what the last exhibit we marked was? I don't have my list in front of me.
You give me just a minute, I'll. A three.
A three, correct.
That's right.
This will be a, this will be a four or a three, Michael?
A three.
Okay.
A three. So, Mr. Bar, would you please describe the exhibit on the screen, A3, and tell us what that is?
All right. A3 is the, is the unit breakdown of all the units in the Hillsborough project. If I can just go through and I will, I'll refer back and forth to exhibits if, if that's okay.
Sure. Can we make, can we make this exhibit bigger, Fred?
Actually, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. So, those of us who are you know, hard of seeing.
These are, these are the exhibits that we, we submitted a couple of months ago. I'm not gonna use all of them, so at the end of my presentation, if we can just select the ones I used and then we can enter them into.
We're gonna mark them, Mr. Bar, every, as you bring them up, so this is A3.
Okay.
Or C3, pardon me.
All right. The proposed Campus Drive development is approximately 13.75 acre parcel located on Campus Drive in Hillsborough Township. Parcel's presently zoned light industrial with a multifamily inclusionary overlay designation. Development proposal is for a total of 96 residential units, 73 market rate units and 23 affordable COA units in conformance with the 24% affordable requirement.
This is C, this is C4?
Correct.
What does this represent, Mr. Bar?
This is a floor plan of a typical building that's proposed.
And, excuse me one second, Eric, when you call it C4, do you mean A4?
A4, I thought I turned C, so I apologize, Mike.
I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have A3 and A4 in the card.
Okay.
All the units are distributed in four three-story buildings, each building containing 24 units or eight units per floor. The distribution of market rate units is 17 one-bedroom units of approximately 800 square feet, 52 two-bedroom units at approximately 1,200 square feet, and four three-bedroom units of approximately 1,500 square feet. Distribution of the COA units is five one-bedroom units of approximately 650 average square feet, which is in conformance with the litigation settlement agreement, which requires one-bedroom COA units to be a minimum of 575 square feet. 13 two-bedroom units of approximately 1,000 square feet average, which is in conformance with the litigation settlement agreement, which requires two-bedroom units to be a minimum of 725 square feet and five three-bedroom units of approximately 1,200 average square feet, which is in conformance with the litigation settlement agreement, which requires three-bedroom units to be a minimum of 1,060 square feet. The COA units are distributed throughout the site with all buildings containing some COA units. None of the COA units will contain dent. Now, I'm gonna switch to what I'm calling four or five, but this is A A5, which is the floor plan of the clubhouse. Also proposed in the development as an accessory building is a one-story 3,100 square foot clubhouse containing leasing and management offices, a fitness center, community and game room, parcel pickup room, and men's and women's facilities. Clubhouse features an exterior covered patio area adjacent to a pool and amenity patio area. This is a typical elevation of one of the.
This is A7?
A6.
A6, I'm considering my head. Okay.
Three.
Sorry, Mr. Bar.
Pardon me?
Can you indicate what A6 is?
A6 is a typical residential building elevation.
And what, and the elevation, if, if when we're looking at this elevation, where would I be looking at it from? From what direction?
Probably from the parking, parking area.
Are all the buildings gonna look the same?
Yes, basically, yes. And the other elevation will basically looks the same since they are what we call back-to-back units where, which the units on one side are the same as the units on the other side.
Mr. Bar, are the, since you didn't do this as a color rendering, are the sods in compliance with what we be as far as tones and materials?
Yes, and that, I'll get to that. All right, the three-story residential buildings are non-elevator buildings with the maximum building height of 44 feet zero inches, inches, measured from grade plane to the highest point on the roof. You wanna mark this as?
A7.
A7, which is the front elevation of the clubhouse. The one-story clubhouse is proposed with a maximum building height of 20 feet, measured from grade plane to the highest point of the main roof, not including the architectural feature of the cupola. Residential buildings are approximately 150 feet in length in conformance with the maximum allowable building length.
This is the previously marked plan exhibit, correct?
And I'm going back to the previously marked typical building elevation. Building elevation designs are residential in scale and character with varying facade planes and materials creating visual interest. The design materials, colors, and details are coordinated from building to building, creating cohesive architectural visual, visual relationships between buildings. I'm available for any questions that any of the board members have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bar.
So, should I give my screen, how do I give my screen back here?
Mr. Chair? Bob Euro?
Yeah, Matt, go ahead.
Mr. Bar, one of your floor plans, I'm not sure if you entered it as an exhibit, but it's the floor plan with your unit 3C-B.
I'm sorry, three, what was it?
3C-B.
There you go.
All right, so.
Okay, yes.
Please describe what those rooms are.
All right, 3C-B is a three-bedroom COA unit. Where you see the 3CB is living room and dining room. The next. The next room on the exterior wall to the left is bedroom. Is one of the bedrooms. To the left of that is a second bedroom. To the left of that is a, is the master bedroom. So the three bedrooms and the living room, dining rooms are on the exterior wall.
My, my question is the room in between the bathroom and the kitchen. Right about where your hand is.
The room between the bathroom and the kitchen is a laundry storage room.
Okay. Can that be converted into a bedroom or living space?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And the, and the reason being that on the second, on, on something other than the first floor, you cannot have a bedroom without natural light in there.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Give my screen back?
Carl, are we done? Are we done with him? You want me to stop sharing?
Um, I think, unless anyone else has any questions?
We might just want to wait until, yeah, if there's any questions.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
David, do you have anything?
Not at this time, no. I, I guess I got a question. I'm looking at one CB. Yeah, I, I can see, you know, which is the, you know, I can see the bedroom, but I'm going to call it to the top. What is that room? Is that a balcony?
You hear?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a balcony, and off of the balcony is the
The mechanical?
Mechanical closet. Where the HVAC is. All, all the HVAC equipment is within the unit off of, mechanical rooms off of the balcony, so there are no, and they're self-contained units, which are called magic pack units. So there are no condensers, you know, on the grade around the buildings. Everything is contained within these magic pack units. And they're accessed off of the balconies. And yes, that's a balcony.
Okay, so if there's no additional questions or comments from the board members, I guess I'll have a motion to open up to the public.
I got one other question, Chairman. Are each units have their own heat and hot water individually, or are they a universal?
No, each, each unit has its own hot water heater.
Okay.
And you know? I have a question as well, if you're done, Mayor.
And are they, are the units using a lot of electric or gas facilities in the kitchen and the hot water?
I'm not sure at this point.
Okay. I don't know who would be able to answer that, but I'm just looking for efficiency ratings because obviously electric water heaters tend to be a little more expensive to operate than.
All right, the developer may be able to answer that at this time.
We will get you an answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weiss may have that answer.
I'm done.
I have a question, and this is Mr. Amick. Building off of Mr. Euro's comment regarding three CB. Looking at this floor plan, I see that all the other units have a smaller kind of dryer, washer, dryer space. It looks like it's a closet type. Why is three CB like a much larger space? And should we condense it so it doesn't become a bedroom?
Well, because it's
We get more living space.
Because it's a three-bedroom unit, we were trying to give whatever extra space we had to the unit in terms of storage. And, you know, that's how we did it. Now, I guess we could reconfigure it into a you know, a separate room, and we could put the washer and dryer and hot water heater in an alcove similar to we, that we did the other units, but we were trying to provide extra storage to the three-bedroom COA unit.
Is the board's can? Sorry. Is the board's concerned that this is going to turn into a fourth bedroom?
Potentially.
So, Mr. Paul Castro, is your client willing to condition on the record that there will be no more bedrooms than what are called for in a one, two, or three-bedroom space, and that they will not permit such to occur?
Yes, we can stipulate to that.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, what are the dimensions of of that space?
Probably right to left is probably might be seven or eight feet. Up and down is probably seven or eight feet.
It looks equivalent to the size of the other bedrooms. That's why I raised that. I mean, again, just from a glance, if you will, it just looks similar to the other sized bedrooms in that unit.
The other sized bedrooms are probably seven, six, or eight feet by nine or ten, probably ten, eight by ten, seven, six by ten.
With the closet, yeah.
Not including the closets.
Any other additional comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, could, could you please repeat the question that was posed for the developer so we get that answer to you?
Question I had as far as the utilities, are they gas or electric? For the hot water and the
Gas, if available, is the answer.
Is it gas? Okay.
Any additional comments, questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to have a motion open up to public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so for those that are participating online or via phone, you may pose questions to this witness for his test, on his testimony. Again, those are on Zoom. Please use the raise your hand icon to be recognized, or those participating by phone, press star nine.
Okay, Carl, I'll take from here. Again, please state your name and address for the record. And again, these are questions for this witness. So, Mary Ann, are you there?
Hi, this is Mary Ann Soweade.
Could you state your address?
Your last name, ma'am?
Mary Ann Soweade, one forty-two Johansson Avenue. I actually, I wanted to ask the board to adjourn this meeting, this, this discussion to another date. There, the applicant has just provided a twenty-four-page piece of evidence today, about two hours before the meeting, as well as a revised site plan yesterday or the day before. And per the, the agenda, it says that there's ten, at least ten days' notice required. So, you know, the public has not had a chance to review this information, and we are asking that this be postponed to have sufficient time to review the information that was provided in his response and new documentation.
For the purpose of the record, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Paul Castro, was any of Mr. Barr's testimony related to the two items that Ms. Soweade just mentioned?
None.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Soweade, for this witness, then?
Not for this witness.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before, before we move on, I just want to make sure.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The, Ms. Soweade recognizes we will have an opportunity to address that, her issue, but it's not, this is not the appropriate time, or we're dealing with matters related to this witness. We will, if you have further objections, there will be the appropriate time to do that, and we'll let you know when that would be.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Okay, Ms. Gulliford?
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. I want to follow up. I can't remember. Somebody asked about the exterior, and I want to make sure I understood there was going to be an exterior color rendering shown. I just didn't want to end up with one of those apartments like they have over on Veterans Drive in Somerville with the, the blue and orange stripes and stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Paul Castro, do we have a color rendering somewhere?
Of what, Mr. Chairman?
The exterior of the building.
Mr. Barr, do you have a color rendering in your?
We have not submitted a color rendering.
But we're not going to, we're not going to end up with something like that orange and blue stripe thing.
No, I, I would make a motion that obviously upon approval, they would, the, the board engineer and the, and the, and Mr. Maskey would have to approve the the facade, as well as the planning board, if needed, before any permits would be given.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I, I presume you mean so that it, it's consistent, substantially consistent with the testimony provided before the hearing. It's not just a
That's correct, no.
Right.
Yeah, and consistent with the architectural design standards, yeah.
Yes, that's, that, that would be acceptable, of course.
That's a condition.
That's all, Ms. Gulliford?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, I see no others, so you can proceed.
I'm just going to give everyone one last crack at the apple. Okay. May move on with your next witness?
Okay, we'll call Mr. Sekler, our traffic engineer.
Matt, do you have any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Matthew Sekeler. That is S E C K L E R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, the address is ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Paul Castro, before you call Mr. Sekeler to testimony, can we indicate to the public that none of Mr. Sekeler's testimony relates to any documents that you have recently provided to the board?
That's correct. His testimony will not relate to the new information that we submitted, which in a way were exhibits, so it does not, the ten-day rule does not apply to exhibits. We can present whatever you know, Mr.
Well, we'll cross that bridge we get. I just want to get ahead of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Sekler, what was your role in this project, please, quickly?
Traffic engineer for this project.
And you have a report that you'd like to share briefly with the board?
Assuming you want me to be qualified. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College in Schenectady, New York, a Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers, Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and active. Also a professional traffic operations engineer, which is a provided to me by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which requires both examination experience and accepted before over a hundred and twenty boards in the state of New Jersey as a traffic engineer.
Thank you. As long as anyone on the board take any objections? I see, now I see shaking hands, no, so we will accept. Please proceed.
Mr. Sekler, are you going to, do you need to share your screen? This is Fred Kinzel from IT.
I don't think so, unless a specific question comes up that requires.
Okay, just let me know. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So, to summarize my report and findings, we did prepare a traffic impact study. It was dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. I'll briefly go through what we did as part of that study and the conclusions we reached. This site is located on the northbound side or to the east of Route two oh six and has access to two oh six via Campus Drive. As part of this study, we did an analysis utilizing counts that were taken on Route two oh six prior to COVID. When traffic volumes were at their normal peaks, Route two oh six carries about thirty-five thousand vehicles per day. And as part of this study, we analyzed what the intersection of Campus Drive and Route two oh six would function like should this project be approved. In order to determine the amount of traffic this site would generate, we utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. It determined that the amount of traffic being generated would be less than one new trip every minute during the peak hours. Obviously, outside the peaks, outside your rush hours, those drop pretty significantly, but during the busiest hours, you're expected to have about thirty-five new cars in the morning peak hour, about forty-two new cars in the evening peak hour. Added to Route two oh six, we analyzed the intersection of Campus Drive and two oh six northbound and found that the level of service would be consistent with the existing condition, approximately a fifteen-second average wait. Again, depending on the cars kind of platooning through Route two oh six, when the light is red at the Brooks Boulevard intersection, cars could freely move out of our site. Occasionally, after the light turns green on Brooks Boulevard, you kind of have that platoon of cars. You may have to wait forty-five, fifty seconds, but then once that platoon passes, you have a fairly easy shot at going northbound from the site. The sites, obviously, if you want to utilize the other directions on two oh six, utilize the Duke's Parkway Jug Handle to the north, or the Brown Avenue Jug Hand to the south, depending on which direction you're coming from or looking to go to. The trip generation of this site is less than a number of the underlying use, number of uses that are part of the underlying zone, such as a daycare center, medical office building, office building, would all generate levels of traffic that would likely be greater than what we are proposing here, which is a permitted use per the overlay zoning. Terms of onsite design and onsite parking, we do meet and exceed the residential site improvement standard parking rates here, so we have sufficient parking per the New Jersey residential standards. In addition, the parking space sizes, the drive aisles, all meet industry standard requirements. Twenty-four-foot drive aisles, all parking spaces are at least nine feet by eighteen feet in length. So therefore, I could conclude that the onsite design is, is such that meets or exceeds the industry standard and the RSIS standards. So from a traffic standpoint, I believe this site will not significantly impact the off-site intersection at Route two oh six and Campus Drive. We generate less traffic than a number of the uses that we'd be permitting in the underlying zoning. We are permitted use, and we've designed the site appropriately in terms of the traffic, in terms of the parking and circulation.
Thank you. You. Is that all you have, Mr. Sekler?
That's all I got, unless there's specific questions.
Thank you.
Any board members, comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Sekler, Mr. Amick here. When you say the measurements were done pre-pandemic, when were they done?
So we utilized two thousand and seventeen counts on Route two oh six, and then grew them to basically two years into the future using a DOT growth rate of one point two five percent compounded on itself. So we had a data point. Yeah, we had, we had a, we had a, exactly, exactly. We had a, we had a data point, twenty seventeen, back on growth three years to get to twenty twenty, and then two years beyond that to get to a build year.
Okay. Do you need a, a permit from the state for any of these adjustments for that, for the two oh six traffic light? Do you have to go to the state for approval?
We're not looking to make any changes. In fact, I believe that we received a letter of no interest from the Department of Transportation indicating that they do not have any interest in this application, and if that has not been provided to the board, I'd be happy to provide it.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if Mr. Euro, you got it, but thank you for your answers.
Mr. Euro, I have not seen that letter. If you could please provide that. Thank you.
Absol- absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Bob Euro. Just to follow up on a couple of items in my engineering letter dated November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, it would be section C under traffic impact. I just want to just put on the record that items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve were addressed by Mr. Ford at the December third two thousand and twenty meeting to my satisfaction.
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you. Any additional comments, questions on the board? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone from the public has questions on the testimony provided by this witness, please indicate your interest.
I see none, Chairman.
No, I agree. I see none. Okay. You may step down for a moment, and applicant may call your next witness.
Thank you. I would call, um, Mr. Affinord, our environmental consultant, environmental expert.
Hi, Tom, you're on mute.
He, you're still on mute, sir.
He's looking, he's looking. He's got a lot of screens open, right?
There we go.
All right, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Please state your name for the record.
Let me just, Mark, sorry.
Affinord.
Thanks, Tom. Let me swear you in. I want to make sure that that's, uh, under oath. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you just spell your last name for me, please?
A.U.F.F., as in Frank, two Fs. E.N.O.R.D. as in Dog or David E.
Thank you.
And your credentials?
Um, I, uh, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Biology from University of Alabama in Huntsville and a Master's in Biology from Ohio University. Uh, for the past 34 years, I've been employed, um, at Eagle Sciences, an environmental consulting firm out of Rockaway, New Jersey. Um, I have, uh, participated in many hundreds of property assessments for wetlands, wetland delineations, um, environmental assessments for development projects and impact assessments, threatened and endangered species assessments and surveys. Um, I interface regularly with the, uh, the regulatory agencies, NJDP primarily. And, uh, I have, uh, been qualified as an expert in environmental matters in numerous boards, uh, in New Jersey, including Hillsborough's, but also uh, in Berners Township, Branchburg Township, Montgomery Township, um, Bloomfield, uh, Reddington Township. So-
Great, thank you.
I have a vast experience in the environmental, uh, area.
Thank you. Uh, anyone on the board, um, take issue? I don't want to say take issue.
I'd just like to know what team you rooted for on Monday night.
University of Alabama.
Oh, you also have a Master's at Ohio, right?
Yes, but it was Ohio University, not Ohio State.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
That was a very quick answer, Mr. Affinord. You, you answered that Alabama question very quickly. Okay.
No objections from the board. We will accept your credentials, and you may proceed.
So there, there was various questions raised, uh, at the last hearing. Um, very narrow questions relating to environmental matters. Do you recall, Mr. Affinord, you were, you were present currently, correctly?
Uh, that's correct.
And so your testimony tonight will address very narrowly those very specific questions that were raised. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So let's try to streamline your testimony and keep it to those questions that were raised at that last, the last hearing.
Okay.
And Mr. Bernstein, as you know, we've submitted a letter January 13th. Uh, we do not need that letter in the, in the record, but we have, and we are entering it into the record as an exhibit, as any other exhibit. But Mr. Um, Affinord's testimony will relate to, as I've indicated, the very specific questions that were raised by the board and the public at the last hearing. So-
So we, so, so first, we are entering this exhibit as Exhibit A8. Is that correct? That's the latest one, Michael?
That sounds right. I could double check that.
All right.
That's correct.
Here, here lies the question, Mr. Paul Castro, and it was somewhat addressed by Mrs. Sawadee earlier. Uh, this is the so-called moment. If your client intends to testify with this exhibit, and I'm holding up A8 in my hand, which was just received by the township this afternoon, will you make him available for a future hearing if the board so desires, as well as the public, to question him not only on his testimony this evening, but what on, what is in this letter?
He, he need not, we, we need not refer to that letter at all this evening, so-
Well, but you're asking the board.
I, I understand the question, so we will withdraw that letter. We will not enter it into the testimony, into the record, Mr. Bernstein. And as I indicated, in, instead, uh, Mr. Affinord will testify as to the, the very specific questions that were raised in the last hearing.
Board members wish to be heard on this issue?
Yeah, I would, I would like to be heard. So I have the Environmental Commission's letter here, and I have Mr. Affinord's letter right beside it, which we got yesterday. There's, there's a lot of detail in here, um, and I would like the Environmental Commission and the subject matter experts an opportunity to review what Mr. Affinord is kind of contradicting here. I mean, I have both reports, and I've, I've been trying to scrub it for the last 10, 15 minutes, but I don't want to be in a position, and I don't think anyone in Hillsborough should be put in a position where, you know, we have to go over this information in detail and just make decisions based on information that we, we've gotten yesterday compared to, you know, what the Environmental Commission has already done. And I guess the other thing I would ask is, did you, you know, did you also walk the site? Because I didn't see that in your letter. But anyway, that, that has more to do with the letter than the kind of the method here that we're doing. So that, that would be my comment.
Well, that, that is, that's a fair, very fair question about walking the site, but that has nothing to do with the letter. So again, Mr. Affinord, did you walk the site? Have you walked the site previously?
Yeah, yes, I have.
Yeah, that's a very fair question. So, so of course, we will make, we will make this witness available. It's, it's the board's pleasure. We would also request, if that's gonna happen, obviously, a special hearing, because we're entitled to that under the settlement agreement. So, Mr. Bernstein, yes, of course, we, we will, if that's the way this, this is gonna go down, then we are gonna request a special hearing.
Well, let me ask a question. Mr. Maskey, as you go looking for the calendar, is the board available on the 5th? Which I believe is the first meeting in February. They have a previously scheduled hearing on the 28th.
Here's the way the calendar, uh, shapes up right now. We have January 28th, which was discussed earlier for a site plan. February 4th right now is open, but there was an application, but that's not going to happen that night. And then the next-
Right.
We, we have a full agenda. So February 4th right now is open.
Your witness is, is available on the 4th, Mr. Paul Castro?
Mr. Affinord?
I am, yes.
All right. There, there's your, there's your special meeting as quick, as quickly as we can get you back.
Excellent.
What, what, what does that do? I'm sorry. Like, what does that special meeting do?
Well, it's not a special meeting. It's your standard first meeting in February. You're going to get a chance. The public is going to get an opportunity to, of course, to examine the witness. If the Environmental Commission has comments to make, that's the time as well, as well as any other board member in relation to both the testimony provided and the letter that's been provided.
So I would ask that this letter be sent to the Environmental Commission before that date, so that they have an opportunity to review it.
Uh, Mr. Maskey, can you get Ms. Paget to send it tomorrow?
I think it's, I think it's already been done. It was done late today.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, I'm sorry, what would happen on February 4th, then? The they would come back in front of the planning board and anyone on the Environmental Commission who wants to question anything, they would have the opportunity to do that through what the public means, or, okay?
Yes.
I understand.
Separate and apart from you, Neil, as the representative of the Environmental Commission on the planning board.
Okay, understood.
And more importantly, the public could have any questions also with the chance to, uh, review the, the information.
Okay, so that's in addition to what we're gonna hear tonight, then?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Uh, quick question, Mr. Paul Castro, then. This letter is not being withdrawn since it's already been received and date stamped?
Um, it's in the record now, and we will certainly verify with Mr. Bernstein that it's in. We, we, we are in compliance with the 10-day requirement, and Mr. Bernstein, I'm, I'm hoping you're agreeing with that. So if you're not agreeing with that, let's get that on the record, because, uh, I know the law in that area. And that, this is an exhibit. This is not, uh, a site plan modification. So-
I, i- in reality, and sometimes in life, this is, should come as no surprise, attorneys can beg to differ. The materials are supposed to be available to the public, actually, by the changes at least 48 hours in advance, and our requirements have been 10 days in advance. Um-
So, so where would, so to answer your question to streamline this, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Bernstein. We're gonna withdraw that letter because we have no need for that letter this evening. So we're gonna withdraw that from the record. We will resubmit that for the record, to the extent we deem advisable or necessary. You have it, so, um-
And it is part of the, and it is part of the public record now, so I would indicate-
So we have no objection. We, we love the letter, and it speaks volumes to-
So why don't, so why don't we simply mark, move it in, in evidences A8, and Mr. Affinord can come back on the 4th, separate and apart from whatever testimony you're gonna ask him of, and if he needs to answer the questions that are in this letter, he can answer them.
Sure, sure. And it'll be, it'll be in evidence for your, for your-
The public is now, it's now on, so we're gonna mark this, what, eight? Because I'm in an advancing age. Thank you, Michael. This is gonna be A8. For the purposes of the public, so that everybody understands. Mr. Affinord is going to be asked, and if I abuse your name, sir, I apologize in advance.
No, that's correct.
I don't want to tell you how many times Bernstein has, you know, um, Mr. Paul Castro, a question, is environmental expert. If the board members have any questions as to the testimony this evening, you may ask them. If the public has any questions as to the testimony presented tonight, you may ask them. That does not preclude the board or the public from asking additional questions on the 4th of February related to what has been marked as A8 for the board professionals. Is that correct, Mr. Paul Castro?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, this evening, we're not talking about the letter. We're talking about his, his testimony. So therefore, the question, the questions from the public should be narrowly tailored to what this, what this witness offers on direct testimony. Fair enough?
That, that's what I hoped I had just sort of laid out, but I would concur with Mr. Paul Castro. When we get to the public portion, you will be allowed to ask questions of this witness related to his testimony this evening. You will be allowed to come back on the 4th of February and ask him regarding A, A8, which is his January 13th, 2021 letter.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of the board at this time?
I think let's proceed.
Mr. Castro, your witness.
Please proceed, Mr. Affinord. Do you have a, a couple of bullet points that I know you want to make, and then I'm sure we'll get to, to Q and A. Proceed.
Um, well, I, I think I'm, I'm a little confused in, in that the, uh, the, the main issue um, that carried over from the December meeting had to do with the, uh, the drainage feature, um, that extends up into the site. Um-
Yes.
And-
I want you to hit that, hit your points and address the, the points that were raised at the prior hearing on that point specifically. And give your opinion as to whether the ordinance applies and why it doesn't apply and the, the natural features.
Okay, um, I guess let me begin by, by saying that, uh, we're, we're talking about a very, uh, uh, you know, everybody has, has their opinion, but this is a small um, surface water drainage feature or stream, um, that, that is near or at a drainage divide. And these kinds of features are, um, are, are sometimes regulated and sometimes not regulated. Um, in fact, usually they are not regulated, uh, by the NJDP and by Hillsborough Township and their Stream Corridor ordinance. Um, the, the, the sort of administrative history of this feature is that, uh, we, uh, received a letter of interpretation from the NJDP in 2001. Um, and, and, uh, you know, you know, for the public's benefit, I guess, the letter of interpretation is the, um, is the vehicle, is the, uh, the, the way that the, that the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, establishes what features they're gonna regulate under the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act. These would be wetlands and also water features. So in 2001, uh, the, the LOI, um, identified a water feature, which is the, the excavated ditch feature along the western, I mean, the eastern boundary of the site. Um, um, in, in, like, sort of in the backyard or adjacent to the, the, uh, neighboring, uh, residence on Johansson. Uh, the feature, the small feature, smaller feature that runs up through, into the site was not identified as a regulated water. Uh, that LOI was extended in 2006 without revision. Um, extended further under the Permanent Extension Act. Eventually, it expired, and we got a new LOI in 2017, and in that LOI, uh, also, that feature coming up into the site, you know, sort of its interior to the wetland feature. Um, so it's interior to the wetlands. It isn't an independent feature. It's within the wetlands. Um, that, that feature also was not identified as a regulated water by the NJDP. Subsequent to that, we, as part of this application, we, we submitted an application to the, to the, um, to the DEP for some minor wetland impacts, and, uh, during that review process, the NJDP decided, uh, to take jurisdiction of that feature. Um, and they sent us a hand markup of, of, uh, you know, they, they're the extent of it. So, so it was added to the plan, and, uh, we, uh, and, and the department told us at that time that the riparian zone associated with that feature was 50 feet. That has been added to the plan and, and is shown on the plan. Now, um, it's very important to realize or to make the point that just because the NJDP regulates, um, a feature, that doesn't mean that it's regulated under the township's Stream Corridor ordinance. They're two different, um, regulations, and, you know, one doesn't necessarily mean you're, you're regulated under the other. And as testified to in, um, in December by, uh, by Mr. Ford, the engineer, and corroborated by Mr. Euro, the township's engineer, um, features that have a drainage area of less than 50 acres, uh, typically are not uh, regulated under the township's Stream Corridor ordinance. And that, I, I, my, my testimony is that, uh, that's been my experience as well in doing many projects in Hillsborough, that small features like this with a drainage area of less than 20, 50 acres are, uh, not, you know, not given the township's stream corridor, uh, buffer of 150 feet. That's been my experience.
You're on mute, Mark. You're on mute. Now you're on.
Thanks. Mr. Affinord, were there any other points that you'd like to make in, um, in contrast to the statements that were made at the prior hearing by anyone in the public? Or by any, or, any, any questions that were posed by any of the members of the, of the board at the prior hearing?
Uh, no.
If there are not, that's okay. Good. So that's all we have for this witness this evening, um, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Chair. And obviously, this witness is available for, um, questions relating to the testimony that he, he just offered this evening.
Thank you. And the board members, questions, comments of the witness?
I have a couple, Mr. Chair. I have a couple, Mr. Chair. So I guess where the, the difference of opinion is, is that a couple of, a couple of members on the Environmental Commission who did walk the site differ with the interpretation of a, of a stream and of a war, as a water course than the Mr. Offendorf, so. You know, that's, that's why, again, I guess, to me, it's important that the Environmental Commission gets a chance to, to look at this letter because I don't think the DEP was ever there to.
We're not talking about the, the letter this evening, that, the testimony offered is not the subject of the, the letter, so we've, we've, we've.
Well, it is, it is, because I see that the testimony is based on the letter, so.
And I expressly indicated it's not, so Mr. Bernstein, I think, very eloquently described what we're doing. So we, we agreed to bring this witness back to address or any questions relating to that letter, but this evening we have not addressed the letter, so any intent to infuse that letter into the testimony is procedurally strays from what the guidelines that Mr. Bernstein just laid out.
All right, so let's, let's put the, the letter aside, let's look at what the Environmental Commission letter wrote on November 17th then.
Excellent, yes.
So on this, on that letter, the Environmental Commission defines a stream as a water course having a source and a terminus banks and channels which water flows at least periodically. So I would say that's where the disagreement is, because they're viewing it that the water does flow periodically. Tom, you're saying, you know, based on what you kinda in, you know, on your interpretation of the regs, on your, on your experience, you're saying no. So that's where I see a difference of, of interpretation.
No, I'm, I'm not really, Mr. Julian, I'm not disagreeing that it's, that it's not a water course and that it, 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 you know, it, it couldn't be regulated by the NJDEP. My point is, in my experience, the, a feature like this with a drainage area less than 50 acres has not been subjected to Hillsborough Township's stream corridor ordinance.
Right, and I, I guess that's what, that's where the disagreement is, so.
I have a, maybe, sorry, yeah, I just wanna maybe get a legal, when state regulations trump local?
So a question, Mr. Archie, to the, to the, to the witness?
And I was, I was looking for clarification from a legal perspective.
Where, where the state regulations and the local regulations address the same issue? The state regulations and/or laws or statutes do take precedent over the town, over the local. The question, I believe, among other things, is whether or not, in fact, the state regulations, quote, I hate to use this word, trump. Thank, thank you for the preempt the township in this matter. And I think, you know.
And, and as a separate matter, Tom, e- even if there's not a notion of preemption, it still doesn't apply, I mean.
It brings up a very interesting question. And it's a legal question, and I don't know the answer to that question. But the township's ordinance is dated in 2005. And at that time, the NJDEP did not did, did not have, under the flood hazard area regulations, a, they didn't regulate activities close to street, they didn't have a riparian zone. And in 2011, there was a major revision and, and adoption of the regs where they added a riparian zone adjacent to streams wherein activities would also be regulated that disturb vegetation. And in, in your township ordinance, under, let me find the reference. Yeah, so under, under D, D, the ordinance is, is 188-64D, and under number two, under D2. That's not it. Oh, here it is, under, under DE, small case E. It says that this is not intended to conflict with any applicable regulations from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, which shall govern. So it's a, it's a, it's a legal question as to whether or not, at this point, since the NJDEP now regulates riparian zones, th- this ordinance, you know, even applies. But, but, you know, that's probably beyond our, our review here. But it, but it does, it does sort of touch on, on the issue that we've been addressing for, you know, just recent.
I don't think our, I don't think our ordinance has a, has a 50-acre drainage limit as well, so that would, that would be another discussion.
Yes, yes, that, that's sort of been the way it's been applied, Mr. Julian. And I, I guess I should say, you know, from taking a step back and thinking about this, if the township applies, applies 150-foot stream corridor to, you know, to all of these small features, I, I, I think many, many people in Hillsborough ha- have, have this, you know, restriction or, or constraint on their property than currently any, anybody suspects. And I don't, I don't know whether it's gonna apply to, you know, roadside ditches, et cetera, but, but you know, there, there is sort of a, a practicality or, you know, you know, some thought of, of where a very restrictive ordinance like this should apply.
Right.
I can tell you that the last project that I worked on where it did apply was the, the Town Center Project. And that was the stream corridor from Royce Brook, which is a very, you know, distinctive feature, very definite bed and banks and, and, you know, the, the kind of thing where, y- yeah, maybe this ordinance makes a lot of sense.
But it's your opinion that it does not apply to this scenario, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Based on the drainage area and, and the guidelines that have been applied in, in past applications I've been familiar with and, and that Mr. Ford has been familiar with, and.
Thank you.
And I guess, Mr..
I, I guess, you know, I guess it's just the difference of opinion, because I know, I didn't walk it, but I know the people that did walk it don't think it's a small waterway. And I guess that's, again, that's where the disagreement is, so.
If I could, Chair, I did actually walk it this morning at 7:30 this morning, so it's very, a very current condition. There, there is water existing in that, that waterway, we'll call it. But can you explain for the benefit of everybody maybe listening? The intent of a 50-foot riparian zone versus a, what, what is the purpose of creating that zone? As far as protection and or buffer, what is, what is the intent of that, of that zone?
Well, the intent of the, the NJDEP's riparian zone is to protect, but you know, you, you, there, there is a process, a permit process whereby disturbances can be approved. But it's, it's to protect streamside vegetation, basically.
Well, it's not necessarily to control water flow, but more to protect the vegetation near the water.
That's correct. With a focus on, on forested vegetation that, you know, provides shading and helps to, you know, keep water temperatures cooler, et cetera.
Now, so I had.
Mr. Julian, may I ask that you, you refer to the others who have, who have disagreed, the other, it's a sort of a nebulous term in my world. When you say others have disagreed, and I presume you're saying that they believe that this feature should have, should be applied to the zone, those others are whom?
Uh, people on the Environmental Commission who walked the site.
But are those the same elk as, as this witness, are they geologists, or are they environmental experts? And I just, for the record, we're talking about others, the record's not very clear who, who those folks are.
Um, the, the two people that I'm familiar with, who I believed walked it.
You're not sure?
I'm not sure, but I know a couple of people walked it, I, I believe Mike Foley was one of them. He's certainly an expert in, in stormwater management. And I believe Dr. Chris Abrupta, I don't know if he walked it or not, but I know he, you know, he is a, certainly a subject matter expert in the state of New Jersey, he works for Rutgers University. He's part of the, you know, the, the water program there and works with the DEP all the time, so I know he also had this, a similar opinion, I can't speak for him, but that's what I remember.
That's, that's helpful, my point is.
Let me just interject, because Mr. Abrupta is in cyberspace.
Yes, he's one of the public.
Perhaps we can just let him come in real quickly before we continue going in circles.
Whatever, the board's pleasure.
Okay.
That's up to the board. Carl, you want me to let him speak now?
Yes, please.
Dr. Abrupta, could you state your name and address just for the record, and thank you for raising your hand?
Yeah, my name's Christopher Abrupta, O-B-R-O-P-T-A.
Doc, just real quick, since I think you might be providing something similar to testimony, can I just swear you in? Do you have a camera that you'd be able to?
Yeah, I do, yep. I don't know. Is the camera on? I don't know, could see it?
No, not, not yet, not yet, Chris.
We'll, we'll believe you. I don't know if I have access to a camera here, I'm not sure how to turn this on, I got mute on, but I don't know about the camera here, sorry. I'll take his word for it.
We need to go crazy, I just wanna swear you in then, okay?
That's fine.
You swear that any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I did walk the site.
Doc, Doctor, this is Eric Bernstein, the board attorney, for the purposes of the record, can you indicate your current employer and your professional qualifications, I think that's part of.
So my cur, my current employer is Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey. I am the Extension Specialist in Water Resources for Rutgers Cooperative Extension. I am the Director of New Jersey Water Resources Research Institute. I am a professor in the Environmental Science Department, where I teach environmental engineering. I have a bachelor's and master's in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, I have a PhD from Stevens Institute of Technology, all in civil engineering. I've been a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey for 28 years. And I've been practicing for over 32 years and doing stormwater management and other environmental projects throughout the state.
How long have you been a member of the Township's Environmental Commission?
Too long. May, maybe three years, I guess, three years, three or four years.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Paul Castro, you have any questions of Dr. Abrupta?
I do not, but I would reserve for future questions.
Doctor, I think that the basic rationale for allowing you on, A, was to sort of go further as to Mr. Julian, as to who you are. And the other question, I think, that is, where, have you been on this site?
Yes, I walked the site, I saw the stream.
Can you, can you indicate to the board approximately when that occurred?
It was the Saturday after the Environmental Commission meeting when this was originally presented, so I'm not sure what day that was, December.
December, November?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have that date readily handy, I don't know.
Have you walked the site since?
Excuse me, this is Fred Kinsler, the Environmental Commission meeting was December 14th. Was the December meeting.
So then I walked the site the Saturday after.
Okay. Since then, have you been on the site?
I have not.
Okay. This obviously does not preclude Dr. Abrupta from coming back at the February 4th meeting to address any issues relative to Ecall Sciences' letter. Mr. Paul Castro, do you have any questions of this individual at this time, obviously reserving your right at a future time, if you should so to attend?
I will reserve to ask questions at a future time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Doctor, I have one other question, and Mr. Paul Castro may have a follow-up after this, to your knowledge, were there any other members, well, it's two parts, one, was there anybody else from the Environmental Commission with you when you walked the site?
Yes, the chair was there.
And the chair is, for the purposes of the record?
Debbie? Deborah Boye.
Yeah, Deborah Boye.
Yep.
Have you been made aware either directly or indirectly of any other board, or any other commission member who's walked the site?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Mr. Paul Castro?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of this gentleman as it relates to the information? We were trying to glean through Mr. Julian as to who else has had input on the Environmental Commission relative to the site. Obviously, this does not preclude Dr. Abrupta from appearing and commenting at the February 4th meeting.
I do not.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
You obviously have the right to, to stay, and you also have the right to comment now and on the 4th.
So Mr. Bratto will be available on the 4th, is that what we're saying?
Doctor Bratto, will you be, will you be available to be at the meeting on the 4th of February?
I'll let you know in a second, hold on.
Okay.
Yes, will be.
All right, okay, if necessary. Excellent, thank you.
I, I, I believe your presence would be requested by both sides.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Julian?
No, nothing else.
Any other board member have questions for the applicant's witness at this time? Understanding it is limited to his testimony of this evening.
A question, Mr. Chairman?
I'm actually going to get to the pro-professional, so Mr. Maske.
Sorry. I just wanted to get a clarification from Mr. Offendorf. You made a citation of our ordinance saying where, where DEP regs would preempt, can you give me that citation again, please?
Yes, Mr. Maske, it's, it's capital, section capital D, and in parentheses, one, and then in parentheses, small case E.
I thank you.
That's one, that's 180, 88-64.
Correct.
D1, D1E.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Maske?
That's it.
Mr. Euro?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Any other board members' questions?
Yeah, John Chikarelli here, and maybe this is for Mr. Offendorf, Offendorf. Is, maybe it's for Mark, but is the current site la- layout based on a 50-foot riparian zone?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of any other board member? Now, I will again preface any member of the public with the following comments. Members of the public may come and ask the witness as to testimony that he gave this evening. You will have another opportunity to question the witness related to what has been marked as A8, which is the January 13, 2021 letter from Ecall Sciences to Mr. Paul Castro, as well as. from Ecall Sciences to Mr. Paula Castro, as well as any other testimony you hear relative to environmental at the February 4th, 2021 board meeting. With that caution for Ed, let's let him in.
Uh, okay. Again, please state your name, spell your last name and your address for the record, please. And again, questions to Mr. Offendorf on what he testified as of this evening. So Mary Ann, unmute yourself.
Hi, Mary Ann Swade, 142 Johansson Avenue. Um, Mr. Offendorf, uh, good evening. Would you clarify what you meant by the DEP took jurisdiction of the water feature?
It had not been previously identified by the NJDEP, the department, as a regulated water. And they told us that they were going to take jurisdiction of it. In other words, um, it would be subject to a riparian zone, and any activities in the riparian zone or in the water would be regulated and require a permit.
Okay. When did that take place?
Uh, October of 2020.
Okay. Um, are you aware of the new regulations imposed by the DEP in April of 2020? Um, you know, um, imposing 300-foot riparian zones on C1 waterways and all of their uh, tributaries, which Dukes Brook is a tributary of the Raritan River, which is a C1 waterway? What are your thoughts on that?
Tonight, let me stop before you answer that question. Ms. Swade, I'm going to ask Mr. Lombardozzi to swear you in. You're giving testimony.
Okay.
Um, do you have a camera that you'd be able to turn on?
Me? I don't have that option.
All right, no problem.
Okay, you're, are you okay, Michael? Cause I could always promote, but we'll, we'll take word for it, or what do you want to do, Mr. Bernstein?
Is Paula Castro a problem taking her word? That she's actually raising her hand and being sworn in?
I have no problem. I have no problem with that.
All right, Ms. Swade, uh, just, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bernstein, is this um, lay testimony or expert testimony? What is it, what is being?
Um, if you'd like to ask, well, Ms. Swade, what her qualifications are, you're more than welcome to. Well, I assume it's, I assume it's lay testimony.
I need not do that if the threshold question is, if, if it's being offered as lay testimony, then I do not know her.
Mr. Swade, do you have professional licenses or training in engineering, environmental engineering, or related items?
No, sir, I do not.
All right, so this is strictly lay testimony?
Yes.
Okay.
This is based on what I read. I've read the legislature and read, and I comprehend. So I'm sharing information that I've found um, and, and found in multiple sources.
Not, not a problem. I think we were just wanting to make sure exactly what kind of testimony was being provided. Uh, Mr. Paul Castro, any issues?
No issues on that point, thank you.
All right. Mr. Offendorf, do you recall the question?
Uh, yes, I believe I do. It was the uh, um, asking me if the Raritan River was a category one water. Um, I don't believe that it is, uh, and I, I'm certain that Dukes Brook, to which the site um, uh, sort of drains uh, is, is also not a category one water.
Great, thank you.
I found on the New Jersey DEP website on streams and rivers, um, and, let's see, where else did I find it? That the Raritan River is in fact a C1 waterway, and the Dukes Brook is a tributary to that waterway. Um, I, I, I'm not sure why we're differing, because it's readily available online. Um, I also found that, you know, the Dukes Brook Tributary that runs through your property, it's highlighted on the NJDEP map as a ca- a part of the category one waterways due to its being a tributary of that waterway. The entire length of the Dukes Brook Tributary is listed on the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife site as a stream for trout production. I found the waterway labeled as Dukes Brook Tributary on the map under the Federal Clean Water Act website. On Wikipedia, it's listed as a tributary under the Raritan River and as a stream under Dukes Brook. My point is, once I began looking, I easily found multiple sources showing this regulated water, waterway and its importance. So I ask you this. Um, I don't know if you're the person to ask, but why was this information omitted when preparing the original wetlands delineation and subsequent application forms? And who is responsible for not correctly representing the actual conditions existing on this property?
Well, I'd have to say that it wasn't omitted. I have a disagreement with you on the facts. Um, I, I noticed in the information that you submitted with your December 8th letter, um, identifying it as a category one water, that uh, that, that information very clearly indicated that the mapping that you included was for informational purposes only, and that um, one needs to look at the official uh, stream classifications, which are found in NJAC 7 colon 9B. Um, and uh, when you go to the.
Now you're referring to the exhibit that we've excluded for.
Well, let the, let the, please let the witness finish his, his answer.
When, when you look at the official classification of Dukes Brook, there's an FW2 non-t trout water, and it is not a category one water.
So, so that is your answer, for the record, it is not a category, category one.
The Raritan River also.
So respectfully, the, the witnesses answered this question three times. You may differ in your opinion, um, however, the, that, that, this witness has answered that now three times. And he's.
Let me give you a fact here, sir.
Excuse me, I'm speaking, that, that answer is not going to change, Mr. Chairman. So I don't know where we're going with the same question.
The Raritan River is also classified as the same FW2 dash NT, but it is a C1 waterway. The Dukes Brook, the entire length of the Dukes Brook is a tributary to that C1 waterway, which falls under the April 2020 new regulations that 300 feet is required as a buffer in the riparian zone. It falls right into that. I have, I would not be speaking this passionately if I haven't done my research. I would not make a fool of myself, and uh, you know.
No, no one said you made a fool of yourself. I just indicated that the, that the witness has answered the question. And as I understand it, we're in a Q and A session here, and he's answered it four times. If we were in court, Mr. Bernstein, it would be asked and answered, and there would not be a fifth time to answer the same, ask the same question.
I know, I know you do like to count how many times you answer a question. I noticed that last time.
I, I noticed that you ask a lot of questions.
Folks, folks.
Let's take, let's take it easy.
Mr. Swade, do you have any other questions of the witness related to tonight's testimony? You will get an opportunity, as you requested, and the board is agreed, and the applicant is agreed, to bring the witness back on the eight, on the 4th of February to address his letter, which you will have adequate time to review. And you can present in the interim, any additional materials that you want the applicant and their witness, and the board and their professionals to review.
Uh, not at this time, uh, for this witness. I think I've covered what I want.
We look forward to seeing you on the 4th.
Mr. Bernstein? It would be possible if the, uh, Mr. Offendorf, when he comes back on the uh, February 4th, if he could provide for the board and for the public uh, that report that he's, that he's referring to, that he just stated?
Yeah, it's actually included in the letter that I.
Okay.
Um, authored and uh, was provided.
Okay.
The recent letter.
As long as that, we have that to the, for the record, for Mr. Euro to approve in the future.
Can, can we ask that our professionals just validate that it's accurate as well for the 4th?
We will review the information for the February 4th hearing.
I think that's a very good idea.
As, as will we.
Thank you.
Right, anyone else in the public?
Yes, we have another one. Please uh, unmute yourself and state your name and address and spell your last name for the record, please.
First name is John, last name Tutunji, T U T U N J I A N. Address is 150 Johansson Ave. Mr. Offendorf, um, in your testimony, you mentioned um, as far as building close to a stream. Um, you've had other experiences with this. Have you ever built within 50 feet of a stream that's also deemed um, by Somerset County as a flood hazard area? Furthermore, like Mary Ann said, have you built within 50 feet? Because there's still not clarification that this is a C1. It's clearly indicated on the NJDEP website that it was adopted with another 600 miles of river and streams as a protected environmental area. So my question to you is, in your experience, have you built a building, a three-story building for residential purposes within 50 feet of a stream that is in a flood area zone and protected by New Jersey DEP?
No.
Okay.
Not a building.
Okay, that's the only question I have for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Do we like to uh, question this witness on his verbal testimony?
I see none here. One just popped up.
Yep.
Now, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please, spelling your last name.
Uh, this is Merrill Bisberg, B S N B Y I S B E R G, for Hickory Hill Road. Um, I just have a question regarding the term drainage less than 50 acres. I understood that this area, although I know it's less than 50 acres, drains from a very wide area, including that school that's pretty far north um, of this area. Can you, how is the area of drainage determined?
Um, it's, it's determined based on uh, topography. But if you're talking about the, you know, this particular feature that extends up into the site, you would, you would um, determine the amount of area based on the lay of the land that drains into the stream to the point where it, it intersects the, 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 the the feature that runs along the eastern property line. So, be- because that's the drainage area of the feature we're talking about. And it would not include the drainage area that goes, you know, up through the woods all the way up to the school.
Okay.
That's its own, that's its own drainage area.
And so how big is this drainage area? Cause it's not the same as the property size, right? What, what have you determined the drainage?
The engineer actually calculates it, but, but um, that, that's how he calculates it, based on, on uh, you know, the topography and uh, based on topography, how, you know, how much area of land would flow into that feature?
Okay. And I, I, I heard you say it's less than 50 acres. Can you tell me how many acres it is?
Uh, no, I, 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 I don't know the exact acreage. I think the engineer has that.
We can get that information to you.
Okay.
It is less than 50 acres.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a few additional members from the.
Yeah. The, to answer, to answer Merrill's question on the Environmental Commission report, it says it's 13.8 acres. I'm reading what says correctly.
We have Mr. Ford confirm it at some point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abrupta, please state your name and address for the record, please, spelling your last name.
Chris Abrupta, O B R O P T A, 605 Cornwall Court. Um, I'm just wondering if a map of that drainage area could be provided to the Environmental Commission for the next meeting to review? Is that possible, Thomas, or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it should, it should be, absolutely.
Okay. And the other thing is the 50 acres, um, you know, regulations change over time. 50 acres used to be a number we used a long time ago about drainage areas. We used to also use a map with that blue line streams on it, which was very interesting. Um, New Jersey DEP's flood hazard uh, regulations recognize 50 acres as an area, but it has exemptions. So if you have a defined channel, it doesn't count. So I, I'm not sure you can hang your hat on 50 acres.
Oh, is there a question, Mr.?
It can be less than 50 acres, so I'm wondering if you understand it could be less than 50 acres. So my question is, you understand it could be less than 50 acres, and still the flood hazard rules would apply?
Yes, I understand.
So it could also be, if it's less than 50 acres, the township's stream corridor ordinance could apply too. Wouldn't that be correct?
Uh, it, it would be correct. That's just not been my experience or the experience of the uh, project engineer.
But, but you, do you know of any place in that ordinance that says 50 acres is the limit?
No.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, it's a guideline.
Well, not really. It's not in the regulation. It's just how it's been interpreted.
So you, so you acknowledge that that's how it's been interpreted?
Yes.
No, for, for the, the question.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't acknowledge that, no.
Well, you just said it, so I think that's in the record.
I'm sorry, that's what Thomas is saying. I don't, I don't believe that, that should be how it's interpreted, because it's not.
No, but you did say that's how it has been interpreted, so.
Uh, then let's, you know, before we get into that, who's interpreted it?
I was just restating what the, what the, what the.
We don't know who interpreted, so it's kind of hypothetical at this point, unless we know, you know, if this was the courts, or some layperson may have interpreted and wrote it in an op-ed piece.
Thanks, Dr. Abrupta. All right, we have one more. Uh, Mr. Foley, could you unmute yourself, state your name and address, spelling your last name for record, please?
Uh, Michael Foley, F S N Frank, O L L I, 38 Garrettson Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. And I am a member of the Environmental Commission as well.
Thank you.
Uh, I just had a question for um, uh, Thomas. I didn't want to kill your last name, so I apologize.
That's okay, Offendorf.
Turn up my. I'd just like to ask you, um, the fact that the, the DEPLOI did not previously um, identify this water feature as a regulated feature, um, really, that has not. I, I, I guess I want to ask you that, do you think, or do you realize that a wetland LOI does not um, apply jurisdiction to regulated features?
Pardon me?
What I'm trying to say is, oh, oh, an LOI has nothing to do with determining whether or not a water feature is a regulated feature. Do you realize that?
Regulated, you mean under the Township's ordinance?
No, under the Flood Hazard Area Act by DEP.
Well, actually, the department has um, over the years, although there's not a strict uh, congruence, but they have, it, it's been their intent that if something is a water under um, the LOI and the Freshwater Wetlands Act, it's also going to be regulated under flood hazard. It isn't, it isn't in the regulation, but that's sort of where they've been trying to go.
So a wetland LOI does not determine regulated waters, correct?
No, it does.
No, doesn't a flood hazard area verification determine regulated waters? A wetland LOI just determines.
Can we get one at a time, folks? Can we do one at a time, please? So we have a record, and I don't have a court reporter not knowing what to put in.
So, so Mr. Foley, the, the LOI identifies waters that are regulated under the freshwater wetlands protection. They may or may not be regulated, I guess, under the. They may not be regulated, I guess, under the flood hazard area.
Correct. So we're talking about by definition, under the flood hazard area rules, the quote unquote regulated water. So when another white does not determine whether it is a regulated or it is not a regulated water, correct?
It determines what's a regulated water under the freshwater wetlands protection act, but not the flood hazard.
Okay, that, well, I think we can agree to disagree. The purpose of a welding LOI is to determine staple water and waterland boundaries.
Mr. Foley?
Yep.
You're gonna give testimony? I'm gonna swear you in, Mr. Lombardozzi.
Uh, well, am I allowed? I, I just.
You're, you're.
What's the process? I don't understand the process. If I only can, go ahead.
I'm gonna swear you. We're gonna have you swearing in.
Okay.
Okay.
Foley, um, do you have a camera?
Yeah.
Would you be able to start that on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mike, give him a second. I just promoted him, so he should be able to turn it on now.
Understood. Thank you.
Are you able to turn it on, Mike?
And there he is.
All right. Is that working?
All right.
There you go.
I just want to swear you in, okay? If you could raise it right in. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Foley, for purposes of the record, can you, you already indicate who you are. Can you give us your background?
Oh, sure. Um, been in an environmental scientist, working in a professional, as a professional environmental scientist for about twenty-four years. Uh, my employer is AECOM. I do permitting, uh, endangered species surveys, uh, EIS statements for numerous local municipal, state and federal transportation infrastructure projects. I am a certified professional wetland scientist by the Society of Wetland Scientists. I've been on the environmental commission for three or four years.
Have you walked the property?
I have not to this point.
Mr. Paula Castro, do you have any questions of this witness in terms of his experience?
Good evening. Just briefly, are you, are you in support of the, this project? That is before this board?
I'm sup, I'm in support of any project that meets our requirements.
That wasn't the question. Sorry, that wasn't the question. Are you in support of this project? That is before the, if you were on the planning board, would you vote yes for it or no for it, based on what you've heard so far?
I have no idea. I haven't heard the entire, uh, testimony from everybody. That's why I'm here.
So far, if you had to vote right this second, what would you say?
Mr. Foley, I don't think you have to answer that question.
I would like, no, no opinion.
Mr. Foley, sorry, Mr. Paul Castro, what? What are you trying to get at with that question?
I'm trying to get at that this is within the ambit of a co-op proceeding and it's, we're providing low and mod housing. And I believe the focus is misguided, so I'm trying to decipher to really cut through this, some of this, um, quote unquote testimony, and I accept your credentials. But really, I think we're losing sight of the fact this is a co-op proceeding. And I believe last hearing, uh, Mr. Euro agreed with Mr. Ford's interpretation of how it's been interpreted. I just think we're really lo, losing focus. I'm trying to get a handle on, um, what's really going on and whether certain, and make, for, for all I know, certain board members may love this project, may be lukewarm on it, or they don't want it, but we're trying to, I'm truly trying to get to the bottom. So this particular witness, before he testified, is or asked the questions. A threshold question sometimes is, hey, do you, do you love the project? Maybe, maybe the answer is, you know what, I love this project, but I don't think they meet the regulations. So it's a very fair question. It's, it's.
And the, and the witness's answer that he has no opinion on the project one way or the other. And while I understand there is an inclusionary component to it, as you're well aware, and these are conversations we had with the court and the master as well, there are still environmental and related issues that have to be addressed with or without an affordable housing component. So.
Yeah, I just find it incredible that, that this witness doesn't have an opinion because he hasn't heard enough yet.
Well.
You're most incredible.
Someone's saying they haven't heard enough to form an opinion one way or the other. And I'm finding your line of questioning a little bit out of character because we have not ever had this type of line of questioning by any other affordable housing applicant.
There is always, there is always a first time and this, this, this property has a lot of history to it.
Mr., Mr. Foley?
I, I, I'm, I'm, I have no, I have no further questions at this time.
Mr. Foley, ask your question.
But again, I, I think he answered my question. It's just a, um, a, uh, uh, we're talking about, you know, a regulated water feature is under, is, is guided under the flood hazard area protection act rules. Right? Staple water and wetland delineations are guided by the freshwater wetland protection act rules. So I'm just confused why we're using another Y determine regulated water jurisdiction. Regulated water is, is a specific, you know, legal term by, according to the regulations. So, you know, I appreciate the wetland delineation and, and what that says and DEPs approve that. And then when DEP comes back during the review of a flood hazard area permit, they quote unquote take jurisdiction of a feature that they didn't before. It's my professional opinion. It's not that they didn't take jurisdiction before. They didn't have the opportunity before they saw the flood hazard area permit. The flood hazard area permits what defines quote unquote regulated features. So I, I don't think DEPs ever even changed their mind because they never saw it before in that respect. Um, so I, I don't know if that's a question or a statement. I apologize. I just wanted to make that differentiation that we can't use A to prove B.
I, I, I hear you, Mr. Foley. Um, and, and, and that is correct. The, the LOI speaks to the freshwater wetlands protection act. And a verification speaks to the flood hazard area control act. But, but there, you know, there is overlap in that they both regulate waters. And although it's not a hundred percent, um, very often a water under wetlands is also a water under FH, you know, the, the flood hazard area rules. But, but it's, but it's not, uh, always the case.
Agreed as well. So, okay.
And so I guess to your point, the, the, the department has taken jurisdiction of it under flood hazard. And, uh, they've told us to add it to the plan and we've added to the plan. And they've told us that the riparian zone is fifty feet and we've added that. And, um, you know, we'll comply with the regulations.
Okay. And was the flood hazard area permit, an individual permit and a verification or one or the other?
Yes, it was.
Which one? I'm sorry.
That was a multi-part question.
I'm sorry. It was verification and a, um.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you just repeat the question?
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, did the applicant apply for flood hazard area individual permit and/or a flood hazard area verification?
We applied for both, as I recall.
Okay. And have you received response or approval of those permits to this point, to this date?
Uh, no.
Okay.
A, a, as you know, um, uh, Mike, um, sort of at the last minute, the department had some, some, uh, some questions and, and so, uh, we're addressing those.
No, that's fine. Um, are you still, are you still within your ninety day?
No, we had to, we had to withdraw.
Okay.
We're gonna be resubmitting.
You did resubmit?
We, we haven't yet.
Oh, you will?
We will, yeah.
Okay. Um, and I know a lot of times it goes to a hundred and twenty days. Um, okay. Thank you. And just as a follow-up, maybe to help previously. Um, and Mr. Ford, you can concur or talk about it, you know, next on the fourth. Um, but, um, you know, I agree with him in that the stream is not the category one. Um, and for the public comment before, I understand their concern, but it might just help that if you look on um, New Jersey GeoWeb, it actually specifies spatially what is and what is not a category one. Um, if it helps, I realize that, um, uh, sometimes the rules, interpreting the rules and regulations can be confusing. Um, and just as a, a, a quick note, um, yes, tributaries to C one waterways or are waterways under certain conditions. Um, you know, it depends on the size of the drainage area, um, the limits of the drainage area. So the public comment was correct to a point. Um, but if it helps, I would suggest they check out uh, New Jersey GeoWeb online. It's free and accessible to everybody for, to clearly see where the category waters are. Um, that's, that's all I had to say.
Obviously, Mr. Foley, you are more than welcome to come back on the fourth of February.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Fred?
I see no one else at this time.
How are we doing, Michael?
Hanging in there.
Mr. Paul Kowski, do you have other testimonies for this evening?
We do. We have one, we have one super fast witness and, um, I'd like to call that witness.
Okay, because obviously we don't do new, we want to get, if we, we're coming back to fourth, so I didn't want to drag it out longer than we had to, but.
We have a, a super fast. We have our planner, Ms. Cofone.
Okay.
Ms. Cofoney is that, isn't.
She is super fast. And, and in light of it being Ms. Cofone, do you guys mind if I take like two minutes and just grab a glass of water?
Sure.
It, it looks like it's nine twenty-three. You want to reconvene at nine thirty?
Thank you.
Okay, so.
All right, Christine.
I'll be fast.
I thought I. Thought I had it up.
Chairman's grown a longer beard since the break.
Been here that long.
Amazing what a little walk does. Mike, how's that drink?
I bet you it's not water Carl. By the way, why do we, 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 we've done Kaz in for the time being?
I guess just for the committee.
Someday we'll all be back together.
Twenty twenty eight.
Alright, I see it's nine thirty, so.
Want to take a roll call, Mr. Bernstein?
Uh, yeah, why don't you take a roll call, Mr. Kinzel?
Alright, Mike.
For board, for board members only.
Or Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Pezen?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Bonnie?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Here Saraji?
Here.
And the three, and the three board professionals are here, Mr. Euro, Mr. Maskey and Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Paula Castro, before the break, you were intending to call Ms. Cofone.
Yes, I would like to officially call Ms. Cofone.
Alright Christine.
Unmute Christine.
I saw you do it and it went right.
You can, you can, you can testify, but nobody will hear you.
Get it together please.
There might be a lot of people who like that, so.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, it's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O, Edison Frank, O-N-E. Business address is one twenty five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one. I am testifying tonight as a licensed professional planner. I testified here in Hillsborough and about four hundred and twenty other municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. In addition to that, I am a special affordable housing master in about thirty different locations. I have several um towns in Somerset County, so I work with Judge Miller extensively on those matters and throughout the state. Um, down to Gloucester, up in Passaic, I have a number of towns where I am an affordable housing special master. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services and my licenses are current and valid.
What don't you do?
So, so we're not, so we're not submitting her as an expert, is that what I might understand?
Getting Mr. Bernstein, I'm getting the vibe that you've, you've heard her testimony in previous sessions.
Does anyone have any problems in permitting Ms. Cofone to testify as an expert witness? Hearing on Mr. Paula Castro.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone, uh, you have a presentation you'd like to make, is that correct?
I do, um, so I would just like to start by saying that this is a substantially conforming application. The applicant is really requesting only three variances at this point. And I know prior witnesses went over the application at length as far as the site features, the location of it. But it is in the multifamily inclusionary overlay district, um, which is an overlay in your I three industrial zoning district, which makes it a permitted use. And I think it's very important to frame what the purpose of that zone was and the purpose of that overlay is to implement your affordable housing obligation. Um, Hillsborough received some vacant land adjustments and some other adjustments to your obligation. So what that means in affordable housing terms is this is a really important project because it actually results in the creation of units. So it's an important part of your settlement agreement. When you look at the stated purpose of that affordable housing overlay that you adopted in two thousand nineteen, the purpose of the multifamily inclusionary overlay district is to provide an incentive for the construction of affordable multifamily housing in the I three district. The standards are intended to offer maximum flexibility for site design and selection of dwelling unit types in order to create a balanced housing pattern attracted to all income and age segments of the community as part of the township's fair share housing plan for meeting the region's low and moderate income housing need. So the reason I bring that in is because that is the essentially the fundamental reason why this application is before this board. As part of your settlement agreement, you put the zoning in place to allow for this use here. There is a twenty four percent set aside that this project is doing and what does that mean? You know, when we work in the affordable housing arena, we throw words around like set aside and we just assume everybody knows what they mean. But what that means is that of the proposed ninety six units on site, the applicant is proposing to do twenty three of them as affordable units. So that is a substantial set aside. So for example, throughout the state, I would say a typical set aside for a rental project is fifteen percent, twenty percent for, for sale, can they vary? They absolutely can, can, but twenty four percent, I will tell you, participating in many of these settlement discussions um, in my experience is a generous set aside. So good for you Hillsborough for putting, you know, a ordinance forward that requires such a set aside. So that's really encouraging to see. The variance relief though, the reason we're seeking just a few variances and Mr. Maskey does refer to those variances in his October second, two thousand twenty review letter. And Mr. Euro essentially he points some of them out, but he really defers to Mr. Maskey um, in his review letter. So for the board's edification, the variances that we're seeking is we are seeking a variance for a sign height of six point four inches where your ordinance requires four feet. We are seeking a variance for the accessory structure site and um accessory structure height of thirty where twenty is required in the zone. And we provided testimony from our architects earlier. And we're also asking for a variance for the percentage of trees that are going to be removed. Twenty percent is what is required by ordinance. And I'll provide a little more testimony to justify these variants and we're exceeding that. I think we're at about thirty seven percent. Those are the only three variances we're seeking because we are going to revise the plans to conform with the trash enclosures. We're going to eliminate two parking spaces, which is going to allow us to provide for the parking on all three sides. It's going to allow us for park, to provide for the swing doors. And we're actually going to provide for an opportunity to have possibly one additional um dumpster area at the terminus of um one of the drive aisles. So we're going to take care of those issues. So that leaves us with those three variances that I talked about, the sign height, the um accessory structure height and the percentage of tree removals. So the board, because this is a permitted use of the zone, there are statutory criteria that you can grant a C variance, a bulk variance, which is what we need. You can grant them under the C one hardship criteria or in the absence of any hardship, you can grant them under the C two flexible C better zoning alternative. So for my testimony, I, I framed it and I, I believe that the sign height and the accessory structure both fall under the C two better zoning alternative. So we'll start with the accessory structure. And if you had an opportunity to listen to the testimony earlier, you know that that is really resulting from an architectural feature to make sure that that clubhouse is compatible with the other buildings. And in reviewing and preparing for the case, I had an opportunity to read your entirety of your affordable housing overlay district ordinance. But I would just like to bring the board's attention to section one eighty eight dash one oh six H nine B. I believe I have that site right, but it's the supplementary regulations in that ordinance which require that multiple billing, multiple buildings on the same site shall be designed to create a cohesive relationship between the buildings. Exterior building design shall be coordinated with regard to color, type of materials, architectural form, modulated facades and detailing. So while we are asking for a variance for the height of the clubhouse, I think that we are actually consistent with the intent of your overlay ordinance, which actually directs you and in the supplemental regulation section requires a cohesive architectural theme, which is why I think that this is a better zoning alternative and you can rely on the C two criteria for that. Similarly with the sign height, your ordinance requires you to um conceal the supports and it encourages enhanced sign design. Also, in the section of the ordinance, it's section one eighty eight dash eighty three, the sign design standards and criteria, there's actually some stated purposes of your sign ordinance. One of those is to promote the use of signs which are aesthetically pleasing of an appropriate scale and integrated with the surrounding buildings and landscape. So the reason we're asking for a little bit of an additional height and we're talking about two feet, six inches here. So or two, I'm sorry, two feet, four inches for the additional sign height is so that we can provide an attractive sign with an attractive base. And lest we forget that this site is actually located at the terminus of um Campus Drive. So it's not a particularly, um, it's not a particularly visible sign. And even if it were, I see absolutely no problems with the excessive sign height. We could certainly comply and drop it down if we had to, but I think it's just a better zoning alternative. It allows us to meet some of those intentions that are in your ordinance as far as concealing the supports, enhanced um sign design, promoting the use of signs which are aesthetically pleasing and coordinated with the building. So I think you can look at some of those stated purposes in your sign ordinance and come to the conclusion that while we're seeking some additional height, it's not going to have a substantial detriment. So I think the board can rely on criteria I for both of those variances, which talks about promoting a desirable visual environment. And the next variance that we're asking for is for the percent of trees that are being removed. And this is really important, I know we have a lot of interest in this application. So I just wanted to go over some of the other um criteria, if you will, that speak to the intensity of this site. Because when you look at the maximum impervious coverage that's permissible in the overlay zone that this sits in, you're allowed to have a impervious coverage of thirty percent, we're at twenty two point nine. Similarly, the minimum open space is required to be forty percent. We are at forty eight point seven percent. And the residential buffer is required to be one hundred and our buffer is at two hundred and thirty feet at some points. So this is not a situation where we are clear cutting the site and we are not complying with the bulk regulations that were envisioned. And more importantly, when Mr. Ford testified last month, he testified as to the quality of those trees and how they were um second, I think he called them second growth, second generation trees where they are not the type of mature trees that section one eighty eight dash one sixty is serving to regulate. Section one eighty eight dash one sixty talks about it shall be the purpose of this article to preserve and protect the environment aesthetics and rural character of the township of Hillsborough by restricting and otherwise controlling the removal of mature trees throughout all land within the township. And when Mr. Ford characterizes them as second generation trees, I think we can be comforted um as a board and as planners that we are not having a substantial detriment to that um purpose or that impact. So that's the variance relief that's required in conjunction with this application. The concept plan that you have before you, or that, I'm sorry, the plan that you have before you this evening was appended to the settlement agreement. So this is something certainly that has been vetted by the township at length. Um, the settlement agreement specifically at section two point four three in that settlement agreement talked about um nothing preventing campus from applying for um some bulk variances. So I think that the various relief that's required in conjunction with this application is certainly de minimis in light of the fact that this is such a substantial portion of the township's affordable housing plan that results in the creation of actual affordable housing units. And quite honestly, if you didn't implement this plan, you would have to go back and amend your court adjudicated settlement because this is, like I said, such a substantial part of it. So I think from a planning point of view, like I said, I think we meet our statutory burden of proof under the C one and C two, I, the C one, I think for the um, the trees. I think that the board can recognize that as a C one because you can talk, you can look at the site features to grant the C one, but also the C two um for the other variances. I also think the board, when looking at the variances in total, can consider criteria A of the land use law, which talks about promoting the general welfare because this is an inclusionary development at twenty four percent set aside. But also I think you can consider criteria E of the land use law, which talks about establishing appropriate population densities. When you look at some of those statistics that I read off to you as far as the bulk criteria, I think we can certainly be comforted that we are not overbuilding the site and it is, you know, quite consistent with the vision that you had for the overlay. So that leaves us with a burden of proof of the negative criteria. The land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard of proof that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance would outweigh any detriment. And here, when you have the very minimal variance relief for sign height, accessory structure height and the percentage of trees being cut down and you look at the overall benefits of this plan and the consistency with the overlay district, I am at a loss to find any detriments, let alone substantial detriments that rise from those variances. And I certainly would hope that the board would approve this application as um it is, as I said, I can't stress enough. And it is, in my opinion, as an affordable housing special master, a very substantial and important component of your plan.
And it's consistent with the settlement that it, that, that was entered into, is that also your testimony?
It's absolutely consistent. The concept plan, which looks very similar to the plan that the board is evaluating tonight, was actually appended to the two thousand, I believe it was a two thousand nineteen settlement agreement. So there was a concept plan appended to it that showed this layout in essentially the format before the board this evening.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for this witness.
Okay, thank you. Any board members, questions of the witness?
I have one question, can you confirm the location of the sign? Is it out on Route two oh six or is it up by more closer to the project site?
It's on the project site, so if you were coming down Campus Drive, it would be on your right hand side to the east of the driveway when you get in. It was sort of, I don't know, we have that building um labeled. So if the clubhouse is on one side, it's on the other side.
So there's nothing proposed out by two oh six? Is that correct?
I, yes, I believe so. Yes, there's nothing out by two oh six.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Are you going to take a look, anyone from the?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Bernstein.
Ms. Cofone, I've lost track, I'll, I'll sort of paraphrase Mr. Paula Castro. I've lost track of the number of times you indicated that twenty three affordable housing units was a substantial portion of the township's affordable housing obligation. Uh, as a special master, as you testified as a planner, can you indicate how you came to the conclusion that twenty three out of several hundred affordable housing units is, is substantial?
Yes, I can, because this is a twenty four percent set aside on a project that results in the actual creation of units. So the township meets its obligation through a number of um, of methods. So when you have a project that results in an actual shovel in the ground, those projects, in my opinion, as an affordable housing special master who negotiates these settlements with fair share, those projects are looked at very favorably in the affordable housing community because it's not one that's relying on tax credits. We don't have to hope for a nine percent tax credit to see this get funded. Um, we don't have to put the zoning in place and hope that a developer is here. So this is a substantial, which is a substantial number of units, a twenty four percent set aside, I think is higher than I would say most projects set aside that I've seen through the state. So I think that it's an important part of your plan. And as I understand it, you also got a vacant land adjustment here.
We did, but you're also familiar with the settlement agreement the township made with, with fair share housing and the various intervenors, are you not, of which campus associates is one?
I am, and when you get it, when you get a vacant land adjustment, I think it's even more important because again, what's happening is when you get a vacant land adjustment, just so everybody knows what we're talking about, what happens is you have an obligation assigned to you as a municipality. When you get a vacant land adjustment, you are getting an adjustment to build less affordable housing units than your obligation is required to be because you don't have enough land or enough projects to redevelop or zone. So that makes those projects particularly important, the ones that are actually going to be the ones to generate the um, the live units. I've had several towns, Wayne, Hawthorne, where we had a vacant land adjustment. So I look at that as the ones where we are actually going to be able to build the project, build the units, become an important and substantial part of the municipality's obligation because it is a town, by getting a vacant land adjustment, you're saying to the courts, we have a scarce number of sites in which we can build affordable housing. So I would absolutely stand by my testimony that not only in Hillsborough, but in any town where you're getting a vacant land adjustment, those projects where you are having onsite inclusionary developments that are not relying on tax credits become very important, very important and significant parts of your plan.
And you're familiar with the agreement, as I said, of which all of the intervenors agree to a twenty four percent set aside, correct?
I, I, I said, great job Hillsborough, he did, he did a great job, that's, that's a significant set aside and higher than I've seen across the board in most, in most towns.
Great job. We cry.
That's my special master hat that says, great job, that one.
I appreciate.
Judge Miller must have been pleased with that.
He was exceedingly after the abuse, um. I have no further questions of the witness, Mr. Sarachi.
Okay, um, one last board members before I turn it to the public. Okay, is anyone in the public that would like to, I, I see a couple of hands popped up quickly.
All right, please, again, from the public, unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, spell in your last name, please.
Susan Gulliford Hunt Club Road, G U L L I F O R D.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Something you said several times mentioning the affordable units, the inclusion of the affordable units. And something Mr. Paula Castro said earlier, I, does the inclusion of affordable units mean that environmental damage or damage to surrounding residences or township ordinances like, like the sign ordinance can be ignored in the service of the twenty four percent?
Certainly with an application that's as substantially conforming as this with three very minor variances, I don't think we're ignoring any of the variant, the, any of the ordinances in town. And right in the settlement agreement governing this application, there was a statement that said, nothing shall preclude campus associates from applying for a variance. So there's nothing inappropriate about the fact that we're asking for some variance relief. So that's, that's, that's my response to that.
So if the environmental commission was not comfortable with, for example, uh, stormwater management, it could be overridden?
Well, let me just say that the environmental commission may give um guidance to this board, but the environmental commission is not voting on this application. And the environmental commission, um, it's not, their opinions may be disputed and the board may accept or reject the recommendations of the environmental commission.
And I would also point out for the record that the existence of state and local regulations are not superseded by an inclusionary development application so long as they are not requiring items above and beyond what others are required. And that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gulliford.
Anyone else Fred?
Yep, yep. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address, spell in your last name, please.
First name John, last name Tungin, T U T U N J I A N, one fifty Johansson Ave.
Thank you.
Ms. Cofone, your, your testimony, you're saying it's not detrimental to build four, three story multi dwelling on apartment complexes that butt up right next to a flood area zone? And if that's the case, through your experience, how many times have you pushed and built affordable housing that's just on the brink of flooding? Um, in this case, the scenario you've listed into numerous on testimony on how problematic the flood area is, perfect example is the adjacent Johansson Ave. Every major flood that we've had in the last ten years, the end of the block floods and no one can get in and out. Um, throughout the years, we've seen this get progressively worse. Throughout the years, we've seen this get progressively worse and the water level seems to be getting higher. So with that said, my question to you once again is, out of all the times you're pushing affordable housing in certain areas, what's the percentage that you build this close to wetlands, problematic area with flood zone, which is deemed by Somerset County, also within 50 feet, approaching what we haven't clarified yet, but we believe is a C1 on waterway, deemed by the Department of Protection, New Jersey?
Well, we've already established that it's not.
We have not established that, in my eyes, but-
There's testimony and questions about it. The witness, please answer the question.
Thank you.
So I'll unpack that and answer your first statement that I'm pushing affordable housing, because I think it should be abundantly clear for the record that I'm not pushing anything. Hillsborough, as well as every other municipality that was assigned an obligation, that's your constitutional obligation to provide affordable housing. I had absolutely nothing to do with the creation of that number. That is your number that is derived from a 23-step process that I did not create and/or calculate. So I did not push anything. I think the record should be clear that that is not my agenda. To answer your other question as to the flooding, that's not my area of expertise. There seems to be a difference of opinion between some of the persons in town or the Environmental Commission and our project team. So I will rely on the information of our project team and I don't think that we are pushing anything on the fringe of a flood area based on the testimony that's been offered and the findings of our project team.
Okay, with that said, then answer the question that is a flood area. How many, what's the, how many times percentage-wise, and you've done this a lot, that you've not pushed, but affordable housing's built this close that we know as a fact is deemed wetlands? What's the percentage there, roughly?
Only to the extent you know, but I can know that we've done work over the past 30 years together where we've had myriad wetlands approvals. Most of them in New Jersey, our deals have wetlands approvals. We're building, we're mediating, we're redeveloping all over the state of New Jersey and in New York and nationally where there's wetlands. So to the extent you know the answer to-
I can't answer and quantify that, but what I can tell you is that all of my projects that I work on, whether I'm the affordable housing master recommending the settlement, recommending the site, the projects are going to be subject to outside agency approvals. So they will be subject to an outside agency permitting process. It's not as if because they're affordable housing projects, they get to escape the DEP or DOT or any other state regulation. So I can assure you that 100% of the projects that I work on are subject to the state permitting process and therefore will be permitted accordingly. And if they can't, they simply won't be built and the municipality will have to be going back to the drawing board. So they're all subject to the permitting process of the DEP and any other state agency or agency that they'd be governed by.
Perfect. So if we do deem this as a township that's not a suitable place to build because of the problem with flooding and environmental, then it would just, you would just have to go back to the drawing board and find another location to suit the needs of the affordable housing agreement? Is that correct?
Well, Hillsborough has already deemed it suitable because one of the things, in order for it to be in your plan, there are four things that are called ABLES, the suitables. They have to, the project has to be suitable. It has to be available. It has to be developable. So evidenced by the fact that it's in your court-approved settlement agreement, Hillsborough has already decided that it's a suitable site. So I think if there has to be, if there has to be an adjustment to the plan, Hillsborough Township will have to go back to the court and do that. But as of right now, Hillsborough Township has already determined this to be a suitable site because it is in your affordable housing plan.
Right. So with that said, then, so you're saying that the town-
No, I would, the court determined that it was part of the plan as campus associate was an intervenor to the township's declaratory judgment action. Whether the township found it suitable or not is really not the issue here. It's part of the plan. I don't disagree with that part of it. But whether it's suitable is really not the issue before this board or whether or not it was deemed suitable by the township. Campus associate was an intervenor in this case.
Yeah, and that's exactly where I'm going with this because last year, when we went in front of the planning board and then the township committee, both expressed to us that they were, their hands were tied to kind of allow us to go through. And if I remember the language and it wasn't exact, was if they did not approve this, and that was the zoning board changing it from light industrial to the multi-dwelling, that it wasn't what they wanted or wanted to see, but if they didn't go ahead with it, their, what they had stated to the community was, it could be a lot worse. And what they meant by that was they could build five stories or six stories. So it was really like a more of like an intimidation. I felt it was, at least. So they went ahead.
Your question, though, I'm this-
Okay, so I'm getting to that real quick here on the question. Then, okay, back to Mark. If you want a question, is-
I do want a question.
Okay. And you're about to hear it. So if we deem, and the state deems that that is a waterway, which you cannot build 50 feet, but you have to build 150 to 300 feet away, which makes you change your plans, are you still, it's a question to you, is then you're going to change your plans, adapt it to bring it down to less of a dwelling? Is it going to be then suitable for you for this application? Or are you then going to say, if I have to knock out a building, for instance, would you go ahead and go and approve and do it with three buildings?
I think it's beyond the scope of what this witness has testified to.
Okay. I have no other questions then. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Fred?
Again, Ron, if you could state your name and address for record, spell your last name, please. Are you there, Ron? Are you there, Ron?
I think you need to give him permission to talk.
No, I did already. I'll do it again.
There it is. Wait.
Oh, there we go. We just got permission. This is Nancy Guancione, G as in girl, U-A-N-C-I-O-N-E, 58 Campbell Road in Hillsborough.
Thank you.
Tree mitigation is of great concern. The Hillsborough Ordinance states that in no case shall more than 20% of all trees on a residential lot be removed. And they are requesting 38.27 trees be removed, which is twice as much. The forested areas on state could potentially serve as nesting, feeding and our resting locations for both resident and migratory birds and also provide suitable foraging habitats for mammals. And also of-
Ma'am, do you have a question? You're going to give testimony?
I'm going to get to it. So trees are trees. I understand Ms. Kaphon talking about secondary trees. I believe trees are trees, you know, secondary trees are better than no trees. So first of all, why would we agree to remove twice as many trees? Is my first question. I'm not sure the board is going to already approve that because I haven't attended the December meeting. But why would we agree to that? And also, I would like to know if you could help me understand the economic hardship waiver they are requesting?
Okay, so I'll start. If you want to answer, I'll do my best to answer some of that. As far as the trees, yes, we are seeking that variance. The ordinance is very clear in that the purpose, that purpose, and that's why I read it into the record, because it talks specifically about mature trees. Mr. Ford provided a lot of testimony last month as to the quality of those trees. So we stand by the fact that we're not having a deleterious impact on that section of the ordinance. I also cited for the public and the board, the percentage of the site that would be maintained as open space. So while we are taking down the percentage of trees that we're requesting, about 38%, we're also maintaining 48% of the site as open space. So I think that that's an important consideration. And in planning, what is the board's job is to balance and to evaluate and to weigh the positive and the negative. And I think when you have a situation here where you are removing some trees, but they are, you know, considered secondary growth trees and we're not having a substantial detriment on the ordinance and we're still providing a significant portion of open space on the site, I am comfortable from a planning point of view that we are not going to have a substantial detriment. As far as the waivers, one of the things that was written into the settlement is that the settlement should be free from cost generative features. So the applicant is seeking, and I did not do the calculations as far as the site improvements for the trees. So if there's another witness that Mr. Paul Castro wants to have answer as far as the economics and the numbers of that, my office didn't calculate them. But what I can tell you is that the settlement agreement specifically, and I can give you the site if you want to go ahead and read that section, is that Section 2.4.3 is an obligation to refrain from imposing cost generative requirements. That's a very typical provision in the settlement. And what it does is, when they talk about cost generative features, is you don't, when you are taking, when you have an affordable housing or an inclusionary housing site, you don't want to impose such features on that development that would be unnecessarily cost generative. So it's my understanding that the applicant has prepared and supplied some calculations as to the removal of those trees. Again, my office did not do those calculations. So if there's another witness here, I'm sure Mr. Paul Castro can get you those answers.
I'm sure we can get that for the next here.
So did the board agree to remove, you know, for them, the request that they're making to remove twice as many trees and for the economic hardship?
Well, let me, ma'am, let me address question one. The answer is it hasn't been decided yet. And question number two, what Ms. Kaphon sort of left out is, because it's in the agreement, it's in the agreement because the courts of this state have over a number of years indicated that in order to see affordable housing or inclusionary developments built, that municipalities are not allowed to impose cost generative items that would make the building of such housing more difficult. And that's the reason why it's in the settlement agreement, not because we were granting an economic waiver. But that effectively has been the law and you can correct me, Ms. Kaphon, for at least the last 35 years, if not longer.
I would most definitely not correct you, Mr. Bernstein. The only other thing I will add to that, though, is that the concept plan was attached to this. So presumptively, the municipality knew that there would be some trees being-
No, no, no one is suggesting, ma'am, that we didn't know it was in there. The answer to the question was, have we decided that all those trees are going to go? And the answer is no, because the application hasn't been approved. But to address the economic waiver, the economic waiver is being done because the courts have told municipalities, such as Hillsborough, that you can't make developers generate certain cost generative items because it will prevent them from building the affordable housing.
That's right.
Not my idea either.
Well, thank you. I am against this project for the record, but thank you for your time.
Ma'am, you're more than welcome to come back and put your comments on the record at the February 4th meeting.
I plan to. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please? Spell in your last name, Mary Ann.
Hi again, Mary Ann Sawade, S-A-W-A-D-E, 142 Johansson Avenue.
Thank you.
Ms. Kaphon, I know you said a different last name than I'm seeing, but is that okay to call you that?
That's fine. It's Nazarica Phone. It's fine.
Mentioning another last name.
No, that's fine.
Thank you. Were you involved with the proceedings between Hillsborough and the affordable housing settlement?
I was not, no.
Okay, so you are just hired by whom to enforce? What is your job duty exactly? I'm sorry.
So my role in this application is I'm testifying here as a professional planner. I am retained by campus associates, by the applicant, to provide testimony on the variances that they require.
Okay, okay. Do you know perhaps if there was an exception in the agreement between the court and campus associates and Hillsborough Township, that it would not be developable, subject to environmental concerns? Are you aware of that?
I am not aware of that.
Okay. Mr. Paul Castro, would you be able to answer that?
I'm sure your counsel can answer that, Mr. Bernstein. To the extent, it's not a question for this witness. So we want to get through this witness currently.
Okay.
Mr. Wade, the application is being reviewed by the board in the context of the zoning. The township ordinance is state law and related items. Depending on what happens, will depend on where we go from here. But at the moment, those are the parameters the board is considering this application in.
Thank you. Ms. Kaphon, you had said that it was fabulous that this development will result in the creation of units. Do you realize it may result in reduction in units in my neighborhood? I'm listing a house in my neighborhood. The floodwater table is one foot above their living room, kitchen, dining area. And we're in a split level. So there's a lower level than that level. So we're talking major flood zone existing at this point. Just a comment. And you also mentioned they put the zoning in place. The zoning was put in place due to court order. So Hillsborough didn't have much choice, so they had to agree to rezone the property.
That's a mischaracterization of my testimony. They did not, Hillsborough had a choice. Hillsborough developed their plan and worked in conjunction with a special master, with your affordable housing planner, with your township planner. So Hillsborough had a choice and had absolutely to have to say, this is not a town that lost its immunity and had the court choosing or running the process. That's not accurate. That's not, that was not my testimony. You, Hillsborough, absolutely-
That is what we were told. That is what we were told by the township.
I can't speak to what you were told. I can only answer questions on my testimony.
Okay, no, that's fine. And just so you know, this neighborhood is absolutely maxed out on water. We cannot take any more flooding. My final statement, and I will bid you all good night. I don't have another question. I just cannot express enough how much we cannot take on any more water and this development will be a disaster. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I see no other hands at this time, Chairman. Mr. Bernstein, I see no others.
I'm just going to give them one more chance. If there's anyone else that would like to question this witness on her testimony? Okay, I see none. So Castro, that was your last witness for the evening?
That is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a few issues of procedure, et cetera. Mr. Maskey, what's the date of decision on this?
I think the 21st.
Yeah.
Of this month?
I believe so, which is a day before my birthday, Mr. Bernstein.
Okay. Mr. Paul Castro, we're asking you and your client to extend that to at least February the 28th?
Agreed.
And you'll send us a document to that effect?
We will.
Other than bringing your environmental consultant back, Ms. Kaphon was the last witness for the applicant?
Yeah, of course, I have to reserve the right to bring additional witnesses.
I'm just saying, you're not planning, subject to what I would call potential rebuttal?
I do not plan any such potential rebuttal.
Based on what occurred, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the following recommendation to the board that if anybody who wishes this board to consider anything relative to this application, whether it is the applicant, the board's professionals, and this excludes, by the way, Mr. Paul Castro and myself, or the public, such material must be received by the planning department here in Hillsborough by 4:00 PM on Friday, January 22nd. We could therefore, more than 10 days, it would allow Ms. Paget to put it up on our site, to distribute it to the applicant. So if anyone has stuff to avoid tonight or what, then it needs to be in everybody's hands by the 20th, by a week from tomorrow.
And so we will comply with that. And I just, Eric, Mr. Bernstein, I must just, for the record, confirm that I don't agree with any analysis that would suggest that we didn't comply with the MLUL this evening. But nonetheless, we can agree to disagree. But nonetheless, to the extent that we have any additional information, we will, we will endeavor to comply with that.
And I'm suggesting compliance, Mr. Polo Castro, nothing more than to try to meet your desire to put this application to an end.
Understood. And, and trust me, we appreciate that. I just want to point out and not belabor it, that COVID or no COVID, to the extent we walked into the town hall and our architect, for example, had a colored rendering and he put it up on the easel, would you say, whoa, whoa, that wasn't in 10 days before?
No, but unfortunately, this is COVID-related. Yes, I, if this were, if this were pre-pandemic.
It's no different.
Well, it, well, unfortunately.
It's no different.
The state of New Jersey has determined, right, wrong or indifferent, the Department of Community Affairs twice, that it is different if you're going to conduct a remote meeting such as this one where the public cannot go into the planning department, cannot go into the municipal building, cannot do all the things they would normally be allowed to do.
Mr. Bernstein, we can disagree or disagree about, and we say you've been extremely transparent. The board has been extremely transparent, your professionals and your, all of your in-house folks at distributing materials. We have no complaint with any of those procedures and we're really appreciative of how the information has been disseminated, especially by your, your in-house folks. And so that, that is really the message. We appreciate your transparency to the public and to us.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board adopt a motion to continue this public hearing till Thursday, February the 4th, 2021 at 7:30 PM or soon thereafter, the matter may be heard without further notice.
Okay. So may I have a a motion to Mr. Bernstein's proposal?
I'll make a motion, Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments from the dais? On the floor?
I, I have a quick comment. If maybe by the 4th, the applicant can address the actual, I think there's a confusion with the public between a flood zone and a drainage or a waterway. So at least can we get straight if it's a special flood hazard area or if it's not a special flood hazard area and maybe get a a ferment, a flood ferment as to the flood zone?
Okay.
Mr. Julian, before you take, I'd like you to be aware that that comment on the 22nd also applies the environmental commission as a, as a formal document of the commission. If commission members wish to attend on the 4th and make their statements, that's their call. But if, if the commission wishes to put something on the record, it's got to be by a week from tomorrow.
So that would be whatever, next Thursday?
No, next Friday, today.
Which I think, I think the commission meets on the 25th formally for their first meeting. So how would, how would we go about letting the board know that?
Mr. Polo Castro, I don't look, I don't necessarily have a problem, Mr. Polo Castro and I are going to agree on this one. If the, I think, the only issue I want everybody to understand is if we put something up from the environmental commission next, a week from Tuesday, I don't want members of the public coming in, oh, we didn't have 10 days to review it. So you're all on notice that it's up to the, the problem, Neil, is they got to get it in by Tuesday.
So Eric, I'm not understanding the question to me.
It's not so much the question. I don't think you'll disagree that if we don't have them in in 10 days, you're going to go, you don't have a problem. The issue is.
We will have a problem if we get it the night of the here, of the here.
Well, that's why I'm trying to get the commission's meeting on the 25th. The commission needs to get it in immediately thereafter if they're going to put anything on record on behalf of the commission.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's another informal way to do it, you know, where we could have, where we could have some type of conference call rather than an official meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm just indicating that this does not preclude individual members from coming as they did tonight. I'm just saying if the commission itself wants to go on record.
Right, so they're not going to have a a meeting, an official meeting before the 25th. So it's, they're not going to be able to, to adjudicate that.
Yeah, if they do it on the 25th, Neil, and they can get something to us on the 26th, everybody will have it in enough time to address it. I'm just mentioning that to the public. Don't come to the planning board meeting if the commission puts something up on the 26th saying, we haven't had enough time.
No, fair, fair enough. Yeah, I mean, hopefully.
That's why I figured you and I would agree, Mark.
I mean, hopefully Chairman Boyer can turn around and report in one day, which.
Tell her that every once in a while, we're all, we're all asked to do things that are impossible.
But, but I would, yeah, I would think that would be a good way to proceed.
So the exception to the 22nd is going to be the environmental commission, hopefully by the 26th. So the public is all on notice that nobody could come to the meeting on the 4th and say, oh, what the public, but the environmental commission didn't get anything on the record till the 26th. We need more time.
Eric, could you just, Dave, could you just verify, is it the 25th? I'm going off the top of my head.
I don't have the schedule in front of me.
Is that a Monday?
Yes, that's a Monday.
Yeah, I believe that's the 25th.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, for interrupting.
Neil, Neil, this is Fred IT. I do see it on the township, the township calendar as the 25th for the EC meeting.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
The motion was on the table to continue this meeting, this application to the 4th at 7:30 and no further notice. I think there was a motion the second.
Right, so I'm just putting out any comments from the board? Okay. From the floor? I'm seeing none, so roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo? You're muted, Ron.
Ron.
To unmute. There you go.
Take your hat.
Keep, keep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Brezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Druyan?
Yes.
Here, Sarachi?
Yes.
So we'll see you on the 4th, Mr. Polo Castro.
Thank you again. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Everybody.
David.
Everyone. No, don't go with yet.
Now we'll have to formally adjourn, but first, David, what's our schedule?
January 28th, we have a major site plan scheduled. Obviously, February 4th is campus and then February 11th would be the return of JSM, also known as Cost Cutters.
28th is 4th and 11th.
And who says, and who says we don't meet?
He might have March off though, we'll see.
There you go. Okay, so with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving. Second.
Hey, all in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.